So where the grocery store is, the property behind it, is that yours or is that part of theirs too?
That's part of Sue.
Okay.
Yeah. They've been talking about something like that.
It's over here.
Yeah.
I'm just checking out here.
Yeah.
The D's.
Hello.
Act like you've been working all day.
Been a fun day. More in the Logan.
Where are you down?
Now I see you on the tractor and I give you the finger and you don't even know it's me.
No, I just use that as a way of those. Used to.
You're like, thank you, thank you.
What's that look for?
I don't, I ain't got nothing to brush about today.
Hi. Give you a few, or Andrew, about the resolution, that's the right. For holding water rights and escrow. Put the intent behind that, that is we want to.
So we don't have a territory or.
So is this applying across the board to everybody?
Yes.
Okay.
Me.
Across the board, so holding water rights and escrow for any developer.
They didn't have a.
I will. Good area, still smiling.
Mountain area.
That's good.
Unless you're one of those people that can smile and go, we're bad because I can't do that.
It's a skill I'm working on.
Maybe they can.
Andrew, are you sure? Yeah, are you?
Why they just don't, why they don't want to do that?
Dude, we've got plenty of water and we're pulling enough of the water. It's our secondary.
Oh.
Their approval was based on.
Yeah.
Are you moving?
Is your facer?
I'm smiling.
Figure out some sprinkler.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I thought it was your truck there.
Yeah.
I mean, we're gonna come back in here for work sessions.
Wayman.
You think we'll stay on here today?
Not today.
It's not. So.
Good.
It's all good with me on there.
Unless you want us to come right here.
No. I'm good.
For work session jokes.
I'll see him.
Lucky you, we're gonna have.
I'm trying to figure out, you know, there's one of them here and nothing. Walking through, I'm like, really?
How are you?
Which one?
Which one?
That one?
The, we're just gonna deny Cody's two, it's a rule.
By, by, we already talked to them.
You're making me nervous, I think it's gonna be easy if we had to talk about most of these, right?
Yeah.
Most of them.
Oh.
No, no, it's not.
That's the one that had the work session last night.
The only one even tonight?
Well, that's one, they've approved it like six times and they keep changing it.
A lot of time.
Well, that's just like, finally, you're like, okay, this is what we're. You go to the ones that understand, like, this flow, like, I don't understand, I'm going with you guys on this, because I don't live out there.
Right.
Like, we already discussed that and came up with that.
But the developer keeps changing now.
Okay, so when they get stuff done, you guys.
We just X that one until he decides to build something.
Yeah, I think so. Once. Well, of course.
No. Smart. It's the same developer.
We all give it out.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Wraps.
No change.
I don't know.
I think they are, yeah. Andrew's gonna be sick of them.
I'll say it's good, otherwise we know that's wrong.
Yeah. Right here, right.
That's mine.
Yeah.
No good there. You know, I'm missing another rodeo to be here, so I'm not very happy.
Well, if you want, so long-winded, we could get out of there.
So you know, Rick's, Rick's out, yes, so you.
It doesn't take long to say so moved.
Doesn't.
Denied all. Yeah, if anybody, Rick's not coming, so Steve's in charge.
I'm sure. We just, where are you talking motion being?
So Rick want me to make sure we give Steve as much? We're on reef with problems.
I'm gonna.
They don't have to, Rick.
All right. Or Charlie.
Charlie might be coming down.
Down, yeah.
Well, I'm trying to decide when the best time is to leave you, because I think it's wonderful here all the time.
They kind of do too.
I had to go to a meeting somewhere, but.
If you get too hot, you go up in the mountains and cool.
Yeah.
No.
If you get too cold in the winter, you go down south and warm and nice.
And I like to be in the winter, I want to be here in deep. And sometimes I just take me somewhere else and see, we've done like.
Where's Ma?
She got it on the setup.
We're recording, we're good.
Yeah.
Yep.
I said it was recording.
Alright, we'll get going.
First item we got on our agenda tonight is going to be. Mr. Bill. This is a consent item, so I'll have Bill kind of go a little bit more in depth on this one than the rest, and. If you guys feel we need to pull it off a consent. We can do that.
So this is a consent item, it is for an expansion of an existing manufacturing facility. In the Weaver Industrial Park, along Rutherford White Boulevard, up there, Pleasant View. Far West, Harrisville kind of area. And. It's a. An existing. Permitted use. So this is just a design review to look at the building and, and see what you guys think about it. It's, it's pretty vanilla, it's, it looks like every other industrial building we have up there, and we're limited as to what we. Can require as far as aesthetics goes by the code, they're exempt from a lot of the architectural standards that would otherwise apply. So stack report's pretty thin as far as those kind of requirements goes, but you see the. The recommendations that we have there, the only outstanding item that we need to clarify is that there is. And this was just based on my measurement of the. Plans that we were given, there is one place where it looks like it's an eighteen-foot setback instead of a twenty-foot setback. So we're just gonna ask that you make that a condition of approval, that they meet the twenty-foot minimum side yard setback there off of. Twenty-one fifty north.
The ends that we have to put in that condition on it? Do we need to pull it off a consent?
With that condition on it? I even look at it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The conditions.
Stand again, that's what we need to remove from consent. Put it on.
But the conditions. Conditions are already in the staff report.
Is it?
Yeah.
Then, okay, if you're not deviating from what's listed there.
Okay.
Um, and it's not a seminar, so.
They sent an updated one.
I sent the updated.
Yeah, Bill, Bill sent an updated one after we seen that the other day.
We're not mutually exclusive here, can't be both, they could have all kinds of.
Something in the night, I thought it said it was being used for manufacturing.
Same sample.
You know. I worked with a guy in Texas who was the, the financial guy for the city. And he would slip little Easter eggs in all of his reports to make sure people were reading them. And.
That was wild.
This was, this was one of, no, it was a complete typo, it was a mistake. But I'm glad that you guys read it and caught it, so thank you for that, that helps me.
Damn, blame it on Siri.
No, I wish I could, but.
That paste tool is not good.
No, it bites you sometimes, but, no, I'm, I'm grateful for that, thanks for finding that and. And.
Does anybody have any issues on this one? We good to leave it on a consent? Okay. Thanks, guys.
Part.
Next item. Is going to be. So this is the one we tabled last month, and it's so many acres. Steve, they brought in with the phasing plan, there'll be thirty lots, there's thirty-three lots and then four lots. Any concern on this one? Any more questions?
There's way new, the four lots ones, they have the other road, they just didn't have no. Um, access for the four.
Yeah. So I probably won't, I'm not planning on doing like the full presentation like maybe last time, I'll just let you know what happened, and what they came back with. So.
Perfect. Because our meeting, the requirements we asked for, right?
Mm-hmm.
Basically.
And that's what we tabled for last time, is basically.
Yeah.
We either had to deny it because it didn't meet the code, or they're about to bring this phasing plan in.
Did you get any, any reply back, or did you even attempt to get a reply back on fourteen hundred south?
From the applicant?
Yeah. Yeah, I think you were gonna ask them a question, you were gonna go back to them, because there was something that was either vague or not in here. Something about access, wasn't it?
No, it was meeting the substandard road ordinance, they had to improve that portion of fourteen five.
Yeah, so that is a condition here. That is, yeah, that'll be something we'll look at, at a final level, when we can see their final drawings, to know what their improvement's going to be. And they have, they have submitted them, we just haven't done the final review because we haven't got through preliminary yet. But that will be part of the final review of what, what their portion of upgrading fourteen hundred south.
Because they were, they were not thinking their portion was quite as. Much as what their portion's going to be.
Right.
So. Should that be mentioned on today? So they have that in their ear.
But they, they know, uh, we've told them and our engineers, I've told them that. It's just. It probably won't get to you guys until they agree to that, or, or it might, we just might have a weird recommendation for you at that point, but they're, they're well aware.
And we could just add a fifth recommendation of the, the, you know, the, this. It, it's based on meeting the substandard road ordinance for their portion. And Steve put in there, because we kind of had some discussion last time about when that donation to the parks was going to be made. So Steve's got a condition on there that that has to be paid by the developer before they record.
And they, the parks district extended agreement on that one, on that seven acres.
Fourteen hundreds. Yes, yes, I believe there could be a, a letter on record from. That's like.
Roger had a letter from last night.
Here?
Or was it?
Yeah, that was part of the, I think it's part of the reason.
Rezone, yeah, okay.
But it just, this was under the, remember the developer didn't want to pay it and was gonna push it off on the lots and. No, this needs, this is part of the rezone, it's gotta be paid before they record.
And so what we want to put about fourteen hundred is conditioned by.
The condition that they meet the substandard road ordinance.
Felix.
Just to reiterate it, I guess.
And, and what's.
Well, before, you know, I guess they'll have to meet that before they can. Get final approval, or ensure that they're gonna meet that on their plans.
Not meet the standard road ordinance before final approval.
Yeah, plans must show or something.
Plan must.
That get us where we need to go, Charlie? I, I needed just took a bite, so that's why I wanted to ask you.
As far as the roads go, yeah. Um, parts. So we need to make sure we do with rezones. And so we need to make sure it's very clear that that rezone is totally and wholly contingent on that voluntary contribution. And I think we need to make sure that. Money changes hands. Uh, prior to the county commission recording or finally adopting the agreement. Because they agreed to offer a gift to the park.
To get the rezone.
And if we're now conditioning it on them actually following through with their promise, now it's an exaction. And so we want to make sure it's clear. That. This was a gift that they offered, and it's why they got the rezone, and the rezone is almost conditional on this, this gift being executed. It's just a lot cleaner for us, uh, I think in the future, if we make sure that the park district has what they were promised. Uh, prior to them even applying for us.
Okay. Then, then the, uh. Council make it legal to that, now, not like a tax. I've seen that go through where they can just put that on like a item. So we don't have to negotiate on all the parks.
Yes.
I thought they passed that off.
They did, they did, but they haven't applied it to parks yet. Oh, so like a, a PID, right?
Yeah.
A public improvement district, yeah, they haven't applied it, any of that to parks yet.
Oh.
But PID can use, I think, to pay for parks. Just. Um, it has to be specifically written.
Well, so I hadn't, I didn't hear you real well, so that means the commission hasn't passed anything that can condition. Of, of an approval.
Right.
Contingent upon. Parks district, like the water district, fire district, and so on, et cetera, et cetera.
Uh, now, we can, as far as exactions go. If it's that one. Starting from the beginning, if it's a gift, we need to make sure we're clear that this is a gift from the developer. And it's a gift that helps the county feel a lot more comfortable about giving them more debt. Uh, and so the only thing that really applies to parks, because the only thing we're asking for gifts for. Is, is the park. Um, as far as the infrastructure improvements go, um, if they wanted to apply for a PID, a public improvement district, they can, but in these cases, they haven't. So, yeah, you can condition your approvals on them having appropriate. Infrastructure, it's just the park. Is part of it, keep that separate, keep it a gift and not an exaction.
Yeah. And that it's, and we want, but we want to see that done. Before approval.
Yeah.
Before we even see subdivision, basically.
Yeah, so I'm not. On this particular one. I, I wouldn't worry too much about it. Uh, we know the landowners understand that they'll need to write a check to the park district. We could talk a little more offline. Um, about risk and not risk, and we can bring Liam into it, but it's just a lot cleaner. If we just from, from here on out, make sure that that gets done prior to the development agreement, getting, getting by every pass.
Yeah, there, we actually got a letter. Yeah, in the package, but it's part of this.
They don't have no funds. They haven't paid, I mean, we got the letter, but I think what Charlie's saying is, so when we approve these in rezones, we need to make sure that before we approve a rezone. Put a condition in there, before development agreements executed, funds must be transferred for the park.
Okay, your promised funds or something, right, because.
Or required funds, right?
They are, because that's condition of the rezone. If they're not gonna get the rezone, that was a condition of the rezone for the.
It can be for rezone, but not for.
That's right.
Once we get the subdivision, it's an exaction.
Yeah.
Yes.
We lose that.
At a reason, we can ask for a lot more stuff from them. Cody's not looking at me.
So, because I feel like when we're talking about this in our meetings, you know, up here with the public, it's almost like it. It's a requirement, it's an unofficial requirement, right, like, well, we expect this, I've even noticed that, well, we, we've expected this out of others, so we expect it out of the future ones too.
For a rezone, yes, yeah.
So we need to make it, we need to make it very clear. Um. The only reason, I hate to use the word pay to play, but it is kind of a pay to play, we don't want to see a whole lot of development happening unless we've got the open space. And we know that we can't think. Open space above and beyond what the impact of that development is. And so the fact that we've in the past struggled to get open space and keep it open and, and usable recreational space. Um, we've put developers on notice from the very beginning, of say a rezone application that. They're probably not gonna get it through if they are not offering some kind of contribution to the county above and beyond. The effect of their subdivision. Um, the reason why this is important is because the legislative decision of a rezone, but a rezone is a legislative decision. And so there's negotiation, there's chips, there's bargaining, there's all kinds of stuff, and a developer can make the county as happy as the county needs to be to offer that rezone. Um. Developer gets a financial benefit out of that rezone, county gets a. Parks and Recreation open, open space benefit out of that rezone, right? Uh, everybody wins.
Yeah.
When it comes to. Having the new zone already applied, and then going through the subdivision process. Uh, if the county says, well, you're not gonna get your subdivision approved unless you do. X, Y, Z. X, Y, Z is an exaction.
Yeah.
And so, and an exemption has to follow the rule of roughly proportionate and essentially related to the development. And the whole point of that roughly proportionate is. They, we can only ask them at that point for. The amount of park area or infrastructure or funds or whatever, that. Exactly are roughly proportionate to what their impact is, not above and beyond, as we did. Through the rezone process, I think if I remember right, Steve, there was something in the development agreement that says that they agree to this. And so if they don't do it, then we can say, well, you're not following the development agreement, we can hold them to. Uh, if we follow the development agreement, perhaps even reverse the zone if we wanted to, and so there's, there are ways to make sure that that gift. Is followed through it. It's just gonna be a lot better for us from the beginning, at some point, we're gonna get ourselves a little bit of trouble. In asking for more than we should have, or sorry, asking for more than we should. After the time for negotiation is over.
That's right. Well, that's why we ensure it's in the development agreement, but it would just reaffirm in our. Recommendations that it gets, make sure that that's addressed prior to signing and executing the agreement, then it's done.
The, a little bit more to your point, it does feel like a requirement for us, well, we gave them a rezone based on.
Right. Yeah, I'm okay with that, I feel like, honestly, I feel like what we're asking. Is, is fair, it's not a huge amount, you know? I don't feel like it's that, that big.
But, and really, we're not asking for it, we're just passing it on.
True.
It's their negotiation between the parks district.
Yeah.
And, and the developer, we don't have any skin in the game, we're just saying, okay, the parks district said this.
Yeah, when I say we, I mean, on behalf of parks, yeah. Yeah, I don't have any heartburn with that, I just, yeah.
Keep it clearly in the gift realm. Uh, out of the exemption, I think we will use your first.
Okay.
And if it's, sorry, if it's not money changing hand, it's, the district has an agreement that says this will happen, and then it's between those two.
Yeah, right. Yeah, okay. Anything else on Aunt Sammy? Smart field again.
Yeah, smart big again, again. Now, you're doing smart now, right?
Well, I'm getting sure sick of hearing about this.
Yeah. No, they're back, because these, I mean. It, you gotta, you gotta give them some, uh, some new ways, because they did, the developers kind of negotiated and ownership change and things, but. Um, plan is pretty much largely the same with the exception of, we wanted to make sure that those pathways are clearly defined. And also the alignment of seventeen hundred south was fixed to really just take care of. You know, the, the needs of the developer and then the county when. And, and so that's where this, this new plan came from, which he's drawn it pretty recently, is, uh, to show, so the, the black dashed lines show the, uh. The street adjacent pathway. And the green one is kind of that one, is a mid-block crossing. Uh, the. But that's primarily is what we, the, the focus of tonight is, is this memo. There, there's any questions?
It takes out that, that extension that goes on up through there that's. Curved.
Yeah, 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 it takes out the seventeen hundred south curved, curved road. And it still lines up pretty well with what the neighboring developer intends, at least for housing. Uh, and then, uh. Um, and so many acres, they have a, a street adjacent pathway on the south edge of their. Development, so this, that street adjacent pathway, but the smart field can line up pretty well with that zone in that regard. But, oh yeah, and one more thing to mention is that. Um, there's that Walker Street trail that we're planning for. Uh, rather than having a pathway along the edge of the lot, we thought, let's just preserve an access point there at the corner.
And that's what that is?
Yes.
Which one?
The black dot.
The black dot on the. On the very, on the knuckle there. I didn't even notice that, thanks.
The primary reason I'd like to let's mention this is back is because their road alignment is different, you guys. Gave your approval based on a specific road alignment, we didn't want to go to the county commission, um, with something different than what you guys had proposed. Um, and so where seventeen hundred isn't, isn't sliding up, uh, through the open space of Alseon, and then back down again through the built subdivision, which is what makes sure you guys are okay with that.
Good. Anything else? Now, we're on to.
What's it called?
Wilder, I don't know.
So I'm passing out, I just got informed. Um, Tim Flint, the potence engineer. Um, I, to be honest, I haven't had time to really review this one since it was just, this version was just submitted today, so this won't be. Uh, this won't be what I initially present. Um. To you. But I wanted you to have, you know, on it. Um, we had a meeting, uh, if you guys might remember last month, we've had a work session. In June, and there were some things that were brought up, um, one of them was UDOT's preferred alignment of these streets that connect to forty-seven hundred west. And. What, uh, so what I'm presenting to you tonight is what, what Cody and Jim initially submitted, which was fifteen thousand square foot lots, nothing less than that. Meeting the minimum width of eighty feet. Um, and the alignment, actually in both of these, it's the exact same, is that right, Jim? Okay, so the street alignment is the exact same, uh, Jim and Cody were really awesomely with us before they even submitted to say, what is your, what's the county's preferred street layout? This is it, uh, we would actually love this, this cul-de-sac to connect. But we're aware that, uh, UDOT's a little concerned with having too many accesses, forty-seven too close together. We met with them today, um, and they actually said that they, they do want limited access on, on this street, five hundred south. They, they're okay if we, if we call that an emergency ingress that's built to the county standard, and then it just stops, right? And we, we just put a, a gate there, so there wouldn't be, um, you know, it would be improved all the way to forty-seven, but we would put some gate, a gate or a person stoppers there, so. So that you know it's okay with, with it being limited access for now.
But you want to push eighty lots plus future lots at one access.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, I haven't had a chance to review any lots, so my recommenda, my recommendation tonight is just based on what's in your staff report, which is forty-eight lots.
So. I mean, just like I said the other day. We're getting this the day of the meeting, and we're holding a public hearing on it, staff had no time to look at it, I say we just table it right off the bat and. Not even, I didn't even want to hear it because it wasn't a complete application. Now you got it a complete application, but they're bringing in a change the day of the meeting. Well, so either we look at it based on this. Or we just pull it from the agenda.
Yeah, my recommendation would be to, yeah, ask what you want.
Well, we. It was out of a good cooperation, and we, we got a unit on to. Come to the table today.
I, I understand that, but now you're bringing us a. Basically. We're going from. Forty-seven lots to eighty lots, staff hasn't had a time to review it. You're bringing up that change the day of our public hearing.
So, well, we were looking at primarily just the rezone, that makes a difference. I am.
Oh, it's gonna make a big difference.
Yeah, they're, they're both zone compliant. On record, yeah, rezone, and that was, then Charlie talked to us about that on our call, right, we were talking about that.
Yeah.
And that was why we drew this thing in, and, and changing the lot layout was due to the fact that it's still conforming with the.
But the staff hasn't had a time to review all that, and, and make sure it conforms and everything, so we can either do it based on what the staffs had. Or we'll pull it from the agenda and let staff have their time to review it and. And we just can't get a change.
So.
Right to it in front of me.
Be if we stuck with the original one, and it still conforms with the R fifteen zoning, we push for the zoning. With the prime, with the one you already have, and if we then present this one later on for you to have time to. To go with this layout, we still have the zoning today, is what I'm saying, we would still be talking about today, because there, because either way it conforms with.
Well, we, we know that this one conforms.
Okay.
We don't know that this one conforms, the new layout, because staff hasn't had their chance to do their review of it.
So.
Take a look at.
You, they, we just stick with the original and just go for the rezone?
My recommend, yeah, my recommendation would be, uh, ignore this page, and, and we did have a conversation, and I, I haven't had a chance to preface you guys with that, so. I appreciate Jim being so quick to. Get everything we're asking for, to be fair, we weren't asking for, we just said you possibly could get more lots than you're asking for. I mentioned that on the call, and right after Steve said, why'd you do that, they have, this is on the agenda tonight, it's gonna confuse everything, but I just wanted to make sure that they were getting, uh. You know, their.
Always Charlie's fault, always Charlie.
My recommendation would be to. Make a, to consider and, and make a, 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 some kind of recommendation or decision based on the layout, the previous layout that's in the staff report. And then if the applicant wants, they can come back and do another public hearing with you. Basically, there's something valuable to what the applicant is saying, and there's a reason why this document just shows you where the streets and the pathways are going. Because where the lots are laid out and how many lots there are is already set by the ordinance.
Yeah.
Whether it's eighty or, or forty or whatever it is, now it's. If we have a developer who's willing to agree to do less than zoning, because there's an access issue, then, you know, there's. That's a very much worth, uh, discussing. Um, but we should always look at it as if we're, we're gonna get the maximum amount now. What I would recommend doing, and this came to my thought, this came to my mind right after, uh. Well, right, what, five minutes before our call with UDOT came up. Is, uh. Having us work with UDOT for a right in, right out, only. having us work with you doc for a write-in, write-out only with the median on the county side, not on you doc's side. Um I had a uh meeting today with you that region one planner and just mentioned that we're struggling a little bit with you doc uh the permitting side versus the planning side. They're not have, they're not speaking the same language. Apparently planners and engineers don't don't always speak the same language. And and so they're thinking safety, efficiency, that's what our job is, uh not community and what I've learned is you gotta push back a little bit and sometimes they'll they'll open their mind up. They definitely don't want a four-way intersection on where this shows six hundred or sorry, five hundred. But I bet you we can get them convinced for a write-in, write-out based off of the discussion I had with the uh you know, regional planner.
So that's really our issue right now is um having this whole area approved has too many lots that are possible. No, no matter how they're wrong, too many lots are possible for me to approve it based on the access. So we need the access to make sure that we can approve it for the amount of lots that it can build with our fifteen.
Uh you could rezone it. It's just like a lot like and sell me, right? They can't plat so many. They can only plat so many lots at a time until they have their access.
Which and and I agree, and that's what Charlie brought up a very great point. When you look at it from here, it doesn't show you what lots.
I I directed the.
But when when this was publicly noticed and this is what's shown. And then they get this, it's like a bait and switch that what the public seeing. You know what I mean? It's all of, in my opinion, it's about the image of. It it's, you know, if we have public show up tonight, they're expecting this, not this. And it's not fair to them to not have what this is actually going to be. And the other thing is, while I've got it for I don't like that access. I want an active there. I don't care. That needs to have an access on the forty seven hundred. There's gonna be too much development up here, whether this is forty lots or eighty lots for that not to be a full access point.
I agree.
And that's all there is to it.
So are you okay with right in, right out?
Yeah, it gets big on the net. Yeah.
I I I agree with you, Dot and. I I too many access, like if you have a big thoroughfare and you throw a lot of access into it, you no longer have a viable way to people.
But but if you're familiar with the roads out here, there aren't very many.
Right.
That's the problem.
But the but the few roads people are driving on, they're driving really fast. So the ride in, ride out is probably a good compromise.
And that's that's the challenge that you got. I mean, the it's obviously we are responding to what is happening today. Uh and so they're seeing that as a forty to fifty-five mile an hour highway. And we're saying, hey, have a look at our plans. Uh yes, you currently have a a highway that's built to a design speed of what you're saying it is. But we're asking for that to go much slower. Um I the uh you got representative and I gotten a little bit of a back and forth on how fast Harrison is. And I I said Harrison goes down to thirty-five right here in county. He said it doesn't go below forty anywhere. No, it is. This thirty-five here. And so they're just having a hard time, I think, seeing the difference between the long and uh uh what is in existence.
Planning will have more roads in and out of this eventually.
Yes.
Just right now, there's only the two.
If you look right across the street from that um intersection, there's a house and it's a pretty nice house too. So that's probably not coming down anytime soon. So right in, right out makes a lot of sense. Restricted left or no, no left out of there. It's called good.
Yeah.
Ask the question backing up a little bit. So if we got rid of this that was brought today. And we approved everything that they've already submitted, could they come back anyways and just like, what would be the process if this was?
So that's kind of, that's kind of the point that I was trying to make on the um smart videos. They're not showing us the number of lots they're doing, which I've seen the version, you guys have actually seen the version of the number of lots they're doing, but I said, take those off. Because once you get to the engineering level, the preliminary and final, you might find that you need more drainage uh facilities. And so those lines will move. As long as they're meeting the minimum uh of the zone, my suggestion is to just adopt uh a concept plan for street and pedestrian layout and ignoring where the lot boundaries are.
We don't need this or the other one. We just, we don't need to know exactly the amount of lots right now.
You could either take either of them or both of them because they both have the same street layout and say our, if you do approval, whatever it is, our our con uh consent for approval is based on the street pedestrian layout. We are not reviewing right now the lot layout. You could do that.
I feel like that's how it should be. I don't want to punish them for being transparent and letting us know they figured this out and they want to bring it. If it, if it's not gonna matter anyways, and we can still rezone it regardless of how many lots. I would, I mean, it's up to the applicant, but I feel like we should consider it, but rather than take.
I uh.
But I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't negate Andrew's concern and. Concern.
In in the public side, especially where it's on our meeting tonight for a public hearing. And the public's gonna see, especially with what Steve's gonna present tonight, they're gonna see it come through with the with the forty seven lots.
And I I can just make sure to reference.
Instead of the.
Are you saying it would be better for the applicant to ta- have a table and then bring it back like Smart Fields did and not tell the public what they're intending on doing or what they might decide to do?
But it doesn't, I mean, it's there, they could put up to, so in my math, they can put up to seventy-two lots. I don't know where eighty's coming from. Seventy-two point eight three lots. So that right now this has more than what the zone would be allowed in anyways, but so you get basically seventy-two lots on this. But if they brought it in here, we're rezoning it based on the public knowing that they could put however many fifteen thousand square foot lots bids in twenty-five point zero.
Clear about the density. I don't, I think we can be clear tonight about the density and.
This is kind of always the challenge when it comes to this kind of thing because it's a legislative item. The actual layout of the thing, you have to assume the, for lack of a better term, the worst case scenario or the maximum scenario that allows the developer to maximize whatever they can get squeezed out of the zone that you give them. So having a layout like smart fields where they don't show anything, we can still kind of calculate how many lots they can get out of it. But what those lot, what that lot configuration looks like ultimately is still a question mark. And that it will depend a lot on on drainage. It'll depend on topography. Some of these things, um obviously, it's pretty flat out there. So topography may not be a big deal, but still, you got you've got road layout and drainage and all these other kinds of concerns that come into play that reduce the number. But you got to plan for it and assume that they're going to maximize the number of units. And in this case, it would be seventy-two.
And they're still asking for the same zone. And so I I really don't even need to show the eighty because it probably isn't going to be eighty. Um if you forwarded a positive recommendation for the R one fifteen zone, their max would would be seventy-two. And they would have to redesign the, I guess the question is, do you want to see the concept plan before you make a recommendation to the county commission or not?
I mean, I don't think we need to see a concept plan to this point. I I guess it's your right knowing going forward that that's what they're limited to. And but what what we do need to know is what they're going to bring to the table through the smart growth principles to get to that.
And I can tell, I can explain that in the presentation tonight.
What do we do about the access then as far as approval? Because right now the we don't have the right in, right out. We just have to cul-de-sac.
I would, I would uh consider the cul-de-sac of third street, but just know that. A connection, but they won't uh a connection to forty-seven hundred that won't be able to be used until you got is okay with it. And now it can be used for emergency purposes. It will be built as a county public road, just like the road to the south will. It's just it can't be used fully until you that gives us the okay.
Good, good condition.
Yeah, I can somebody houses that with a road that you can't use.
We would have to make the reason clear that your recommendation is not for approval unless the right in, right out exists. And then we could take that to the county commission and and let them know they're good as long as there's a right in, right out. They don't want to rezone it if there's not a right in, right out. That gives us in the African time to go back to you dot and say, hey, planning commission is only comfortable here. County commission is probably gonna support the planning commission. There there's a variety of options. And you that will usually yield when there's no other options.
Well, I think it'd be different if we had other accesses, you know, this road going across the canal. We don't know who's gonna build that. Or if it's ever gonna connect on a future one, we've got a stub road here that's a stub road to nowhere because of my recall there's not a road coming out of the neighboring development that that can stub to. We've got a future road here that, I mean, yeah, it's a future road on paper, but who knows when it's ever gonna.
Then we end up with stuff where you're at. We end up with roads to nowhere.
Well, there there are.
We're like, we've got to get in our other room. Those requirements are.
All right, we good? We're gonna jump right in. Let's apologize for being a few minutes late. Our pre-meeting and lost track of time. So I'd like to welcome everybody out to the Western Weaver Planning Commission meeting. Today is July eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Um we'll go ahead and start off with a pledge of allegiance if y'all stand and pledge with me. All right, thank you for that. Uh tonight, we'll go ahead and excuse Commissioner. Make the meeting tonight. Thank all the rest of you for being here. Uh first item on our agenda is going to be the minutes from June thirteenth meeting. Everybody had a chance to review that. Any questions or concerns? Saying so, seeing that all entertain a motion on the minutes from June. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from June. Got a motion? Do I get a second? Second, any discussion? All in favor? Passes. Thank you. Next item is we have a consent item on our agenda for a quest for consideration on a design review for a expand an existing factory building. The Weber Industrial. Any concerns with consent item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent items. Chair, I'll make a motion to consent, excuse me, to approve the consent items uh listed on tonight's agenda. Okay, I got a motion. Do I got a second on that motion? Got a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in.
I just wanted to confirm, do we need to specify that the um conditions and findings are included or they're?
It's just what's listed.
What's listed with the conditions and findings from staff. Okay, then I'm good.
Okay, all those in favor? I. Passes. Thank you. All right, on to our third item on the agenda. It's an administrative item, item three point one, L B A zero four two seven two three. Consideration and action on a request for preliminary approval of Aunt Salmy Acres subdivision consisting of thirty-seven lots located approximately forty-one hundred west and fourteen hundred south. It's Steve.
Hey.
Ah, I forget.
I'll come up there in just a minute. Uh yeah, Director Grover asked me to fill in for him. I don't I don't know that he was looking at the agenda though. So when I present my legislative stuff, I think Charlie's probably gonna come up here. So you get the second best option. I guess third best, Rick is the best.
Yeah. All right, thanks, Steve.
Um commissioners, um you may remember back in June, this uh there was a request to uh to grant preliminary approval to the project kind of just as one phase. We noticed that there was um there's there were more lots than there could have been um than there should have been off of a temporarily terminal street. And so the item was tabled so that the developer could present a phasing plan to you that would show thirty lots with access off of this forty-one twenty-five West Street because that's the temporarily temporarily terminal street. So thirty lots plus uh lot one O one, one thirty-two, one thirty-three, which are off of a um through street. Um and then they are proposing to have phase two come back to you at the time uh at at a final approval when that when this is no longer a um temporarily terminal street. And so that's um that's what's before you tonight. The um the preliminary approval uh is is based on this uh phasing plan. You'll notice in the staff report, the um the recommendation, there are four um conditions in there. Um one, so we're right, sta- staff is recommending approval uh based on conditions one through four. Um one, the donation of the Parks District listed in the development agreement will be paid by the developer before phase one subdivision plat records. Two, the building setback along fourteen hundred south shall be shown on the final plat as a thirty-seven foot front yard setback. Three, the final plat will reflect the development standards that were approved as part of the development agreement. Four, phase two will not receive a recommendation for final approval until an approved emergency egress is provided for those lots to have a second access. Um the developers here, and I'm also happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
Steve, I have one quick one for you, just um for clarification on my part. In your recommendation, it says approval of both and then with number four being that condition correct. So we still want to state that that's still your recommendation.
Yeah, you can do a preliminary if you if you want to. You can do a preliminary for the whole project so they don't have to come back to you for preliminary for for lots. Yep.
Thank you.
All right, and then I just, in our pre-meeting, we've had some discussion, but I just want to ensure I would like to see a fifth recommendation added to this that just states that the developer will show the how they are meeting the substandard road ordinance with the appro- improvements on fourteen hundred south. Um prior to final approval from the planning commission. Everyone good with that condition? Yes. Okay. If nothing else or no questions for staff or the applicant, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
I recommend that we uh grant preliminary approval for both phases of the and so I can never say this right. And so me acres subdivision um based on the recommendations, staff recommendations in our packet. Um one through four and include a fifth recommendation that the plan must meet substandard road ordinance uh including improvements for fourteen hundred south before final approval. And also in see any findings in the staff.
Findings that meets the current general plan.
And so I yeah, add findings that it meets a current general plan.
Sounds good.
Okay, I got a motion. Do I got a second?
Second.
A motion, a second, any discussion on that motion? Call for a vote. Commissioner Neville.
Hi.
Commissioner Wickern.
Hi.
Commissioner Faverell. Commissioner Andrea Di. Commissioner McCormick.
Hi.
Chair votes I as well. That passes. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna jump on down to our legislative items. Uh item four point one, Z M A two zero two three dash zero three. A request for consideration and action on amendments to the smart field zoning map amendment concept plan and the provisions of the model motion.
Yes, good evening commissioners. This one is back before you. They they were here last month and or I think it was a month, a couple of months ago. And um in between that time, we we were looking at the seventeen hundred south road alignment because planning staff took some um took some bold, bold marker and and draw in what we thought was a good alignment. Um there was some negotiations between the de- developer and planning and we kind of came to an agreement, a consensus that uh seventeen hundred south, some slight uh redesigns are are needed and the the purpose that we we're here today is to really just get your uh approval and get your blessing and we could take it before the planning or the county commission from here. And I'm gonna work through a few slides. I'm gonna work through a few slides here um, to, to kind of show you some of the things that were highlighted in this smart fields rezone proposal. And so here's the area affected roughly forty-three hundred west and eighteen hundred south. Uh, the current zoning is A one and the proposed would be to R one fifteen. And here we have on the uh, right hand side, you could see the, the bold gray line um, alignment for seventeen hundred south was, was the plan that was approved the first time through, for, for you guys. Um, and then you can see the, the new plan there on the, on the right hand side. And it shows the phasing, but it also shows street adjacent pathways and the alignment of seventeen hundred south. Um, where you still have some connections to adjacent properties. And um, you still have the basically, you, you, you're still conforming to the, to the smart roof principles in, in regard with uh, the roadway alignments. And uh, just kind of working through some changes that staff felt it's probably a good idea to um, make some changes to the model motion as well. Some of the things in the previous motion uh, from a council a couple of months ago are no longer um, applicable. Um, and so we figure we, let's uh, let's make some slight changes to the model motion. I'll work through each of those um, motions. And so this is a forward a positive recommendation to the county commission. That, that the concept plan include a fifteen foot pathway. Um, entry point at the corner of forty-four hundred west and seventeen hundred south. The number of lots shall not exceed the gross area divided by the third acre, basically your fifteen thousand square foot lot sizes. Uh, the development agreement will specify that the R one fifteen zone will govern the allowed uses. Agricultural uses governed by R E fifteen zone are permitted within the smart filter development on lots greater than twenty thousand square feet. Uh, the final layout of streets and infrastructure south conformed to the county commission approval concept. A push button activated crossing for forty-three hundred west are placed at designated locations. The streets shall be lined with trees placed at, spaced at a distance so that maturity of their canopies. Um, and basically they're, you know, the, they're well placed and to um, encourage the tree growth and survival. And the park strips shall have a six inch angular rock or other stable ground covering that is acceptable by the planning director and the county engineer. Um, this is the last one, and multiple elements of water conserving landscape measures. Um, provided in the smart field landscape guide are implemented for all of the lots within the development. So some of these things were, um, these are kind of the just to give you an idea of what will, will be included with the development agreement. There'll, there'll be more, some more specifics as far as road widths and pathway locations and pathway widths. Uh, those specifics will be included with the development agreement, but this is just kind of the gist of, of what we, what you would see in the development agreement. And we, we have Mr. Dade Rose, the developer who's here in the audience, and also the authorized rep, Mr. John Wolf with us today. Um, but uh, any questions on, on this small motion or the, the new plan that you guys are looking at?
Do we need to add a condition in here related to parks? There's nothing in here about the, the donation to the Parks District. Um, in lieu of open space.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. I think that needs to be listed as one of the, one of the um, conditions as well.
You could also list it as a finding, um, so instead of making it a requirement, it's a, we are doing this based off of the finding that they have donated or offered a donation to the Park District.
Would it be better to do it that way?
Um, it feels less requirement-y and uh, feels a lot more like it's a voluntary donation.
But this is for the rezone though, correct?
Yeah.
And we can ask for those things in a rezone?
You can. You can.
So I'd rather see it.
Either way.
I'd rather see it a uh, finding, or I mean a condition.
Do we stipulate the, at, at this point, like you have?
The, the, that's paid at the time.
Donation is paid.
At the time of the development agreement being executed.
Or escrowed or?
I think, well, I think it needs to be taken care of with the Parks District at the time the um, development agreements executed or pri- that that's taken care of prior to the execution of the development agreement. We can't ask her this because it has nothing to do with county funds. This is a hundred percent between the developer and the Parks District. Yep.
Okay.
Felix, I do have one quick question. That's not a, a big deal. Just curious of why we went from thirty foot pathway to fifteen feet.
Well, in this case, let me go back to the concept here. And there is, there is some allowance for a fifteen foot pathway. In this case, you've got, you can see where it's labeled phase two, that block, and you've got that mid block. That's where the fifteen foot would be. And there is some allowance to do so, as long as you, um, as long as the fencing along that pathway is not greater than four feet. I mean, it can be, but it has to be broken out, so that way it doesn't, doesn't create like this narrow corridor that is not very appealing for pedestrians.
The garbage pathway or whatever, so it becomes a dump?
Yeah, so we want it open and visible, as, as open and visible as possible for pedestrians. That's primarily right, but fifteen foot is an option, thirty foot is also an option.
Thank you.
Very. Any other questions on this one, Commissioner? If not, I will entertain a motion on this item.
Before we have a motion, would it be? Um, ideal for us to have the sorry, my brain is just gone. Um, the applicant come up. We've mentioned we would like.
Do you have any questions on them?
I, I guess.
Well, that's, I mean, a lot of these items on here are all conditions based on the ordinances and stuff, so I mean, yeah, if you want the output, if you're.
Have discussed it with them several times.
Yeah. This, this one's been around for quite a while. Yeah, if you wanna, I mean,
That's fine.
Dave can come up and talk if he wants. I don't, Pat's not here, so I mean.
I just always like to give everybody the opportunity to speak in front of the public, meaning that's why if you don't feel like it's necessary, we feel like we've hammered it, that's fine.
Oh yeah, I think we beat this one to death.
I'll just make myself available. I'm Dade Rose and uh, here to happy, and happy to answer any questions you might have. I think Felix has done a good job. The only thing I would that you spoke about that I would uh, ask is when uh, normally like when I buy property, I I give the money to the, the title company and they sign the deeds and they transfer it. So I would just say the same thing with your development agreement idea and the, and the park. When it's signed, we put the money in, no problem.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Else, that's exactly what I want to hear. Okay. All right, I'll call for a motion now. Chair, I'll make a motion forward a positive recommendation to the county commission uh, for all the items listed under exhibit B in our packet. Including one item, uh, that the donation or the in lieu of to the Park District. Um, that, that funding is made available at the time of the development agreement, agreement approval, and I think that matches what the applicant's intentions are as well. So approval and execution. Approval and execution, yeah. Perfect. Okay, I've got a motion. Wait a second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Do we need findings?
That was good to have findings.
Okay, findings would be that, that this is being approved based on the, um, it meets the, the general plan. Anything else we need to happen?
I think that's good.
Still good with your second, based on the findings, Commissioner? Okay. Any more discussion? Commissioner DeBelle? Aye. Commissioner Wickern?
Aye.
Commissioner Faverell?
Aye.
Mister Andrea Di? Commissioner McCormick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, that passes. Thank you on that item. Okay, we're gonna jump to item four point two, Z M A two zero two three dash zero eight. A public hearing to consider a proposal to rezone twenty-five point zero eight acres from A one agriculture to R one fifteen residential zone. Property located at approximately six hundred south, forty-seven hundred west. Mister Burton, I'm looking the right way this time.
Yes, hello Commissioners. We've noticed for a public hearing, this will be the first public hearing um, with the planning commission. There was a work session last month in June, uh, about this, um. What we have here is a request to rezone property about twenty-five acres, twenty-five point zero eight acres from the A one zone to the R one fifteen zone. I will say, when the application initially came in, I don't believe there was a, a um, listed zoning on the actual application. It just said fifteen thousand square feet. So I, in, in preparing the meeting and staff report and, and the notices, I just kind of made that judgment call that they were asking for what seemed like R one fifteen. I've confirmed that with them earlier today, that R one fifteen is what they're asking for. Um, yes, the property is about six hundred south and forty-seven hundred west. Um, let me go through a few things with you. The application was initially accepted in for review. We've had it in s- uh, since April, and then obviously last month we went through with you in the work session. I think that was really helpful. But this, I wanted to show you what the project looks like, uh, as far as have the general, what the general plan says this area should be. Um, the general plan shows this area as medium density. And you can see here on my screen, let me maybe, uh, you know, full screen here. There are some other red shapes on the, on the, on the general plan, but this I've, I've included this solid red square to show you the general location of this property. You can see it's planned to be medium density. Um, general plan talks quite a bit about um, that zone. It talks about not necessarily rezoning property to that unless there is some kind of public benefit to the, to the county and to the community as a whole. Um, so I wanted to point out, there are some very similar smart growth development standards that you've seen with other projects in this area. Um, the the owner and, and their engineer, um, early on met with our staff to, to understand what the expected public street alignment would be. And they, I'm, I'll show you that here in just a minute, but they have placed their roads, um, where our plans show them at, at the same width that our plans show them, and they've also agreed to, to um, build them according to our, our expected standards. Um, they've also, I have proposed a, a contribution to the parks, the local parks district of two thousand dollars per lot, which is the number that's been seen on, on other projects that have been rezoned in that area. To show you what the existing property, it looks like, um, I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with it. Um, it is vacant currently. As you can see, it's been farmed. Uh, there is a duplex on this property on a portion of it here on five fifty-two south. This is an image of what the project could look like under the R one fifteen zoning. It could, I'll, I'll, I'll also mention that it could have quite a few more lots than are being proposed, so I wouldn't necessarily refer to the exact number of lots, but more just view this as a, as a street layout. Um, one thing that I will note is just in talking about public streets is this connection to the north or five hundred south is um, our office with the developer and their engineer met with you dot um, today actually to discuss the connection. Um, we talked about some concerns in the work session that we held last month about you dots. Um, their issues with having too many accesses on forty-seven hundred west. They've expressed that to us. They've expressed that to the owner, that they need to make sure that there is a certain distance there. In speaking with you dot today, they would be okay if the street were built as a connection to forty-seven hundred west, but that there were live, that, that there is limited access to that. Um, and so kind of view this as a, as a concept plan. It, it isn't necessarily something that um, is, is final, but you'll get a pretty much this pro- this product. Like I mentioned, you could actually get um, possibly up to, this plan shows forty-eight lots. There's a possibility of, of seventy-two lots. Um, with, with some lots being on, being a little bit smaller under the, under this R one fifteen. Here are what the R one fifteen zoning setbacks are, or zoning standards are rather. I'm sure you're all familiar with them. Um, I have a little uh, formatting issue here. But R one fifteen, twenty foot front setback, thirty foot rear. Again, this is talking about a, a single family dwelling. We're anticipating single families, single family dwellings in this in this development. Five foot side yard plus ten foot other side, thirty-five foot max dwelling height, twenty-five foot accessory building height, just kind of some expected development standards in this area. Um, I'll point out just quickly some considerations. The land use code talks about some considerations that the legislative body should make when considering a rezone. First one uh, is actually the general plan, which we talked about a little bit, and how this does or doesn't comply with the general plan. Um, it is my opinion that they are, they are asking for medium density, and they are proposing some things that are in the public benefit like public, good public street connectivity, good trail connectivity and um, a, a meaningful contribution to open space. I, I just said trail connectivity. There is planned to be a, a ten foot wide trail on forty-seven hundred west. We would expect that to be built just as part of a regular subdivision um, improvement. The um, the next consideration is um, how do you think the prop, the, the, the proposal will adversely affect adjacent property? Um, in looking at what the proposal is, it is something that is very similar to what's already going on out there. You do have subdivision lots that range in size from one acre to ten thousand square feet in the, in the vicinity. Um, primarily, you've got single family dwellings. A one is the zone out there that allows dwellings and some institutional uses, which we as staff don't, don't anticipate to be adversely, to, to adversely affect adjacent property. Um, another thing with affecting adjacent properties, if this rezone is approved and a subdivision is installed there, there will be some improvements will need to be made by the, by the developer. Um, some upgrades possibly to, to roads and uh, storm infrastructure. Um, there, they, they may be required to um, advance and, and um, add on to certain infrastructure like water and sewer. Third consideration that you should make is whether the proposal will degrade any natural resources or sensitive lands. As I looked at the project, um, there are no there are, I, I don't feel that there are any sensitive lands mapped on the property. There's no wetlands, geologic hazards or, or flood plain mapped on the property, but definitely something to consider. Um, if, if you feel that that will be the case. Fourth consideration, uh, whether traffic mitigation plans will prevent um, traffic, existing traffic corridors from going below an acceptable level of service. Um, as staff and, and as our, and, and our county engineering office with a rezone of this level, we, we didn't actually ask for a, a traffic mitigation plan or any kind of traffic studies. Um, we feel that we know where the streets need to be and, and, and what width and what standard they need to be built. Um, that being said, I know that the, I know that you dot will be asking for some kind of traffic impact study um, at, at a subdivision level from this, from this owner. Uh, another consideration is adequacy of facilities in the area. The, the developer has supplied a letter from Central Weaver Sewer, as well as a letter from Taylor West Weaver Water. Uh, an acknowledgement letter that says they have the ability, they've got the capacity under certain conditions to be able to serve a development um, in this zone. Uh, I didn't reach out to these other facilities, schools, for example. We know schools have property in the nearby area that they could expand if they need to. Um, our fire district and police, they haven't really asked us to include them on, on rezones of this level. Um, although if, if you advise, we'd be happy to do that. We just, we haven't done that in, in this case. As we know, as we, we expect how this development um, will, will, will be. Some actions you could take that you're familiar with. You could approve the proposal um, based on findings. A good finding is always that it meets the general plan or that it's in the public interest. Um, you could also deny the proposal based on the same findings if you felt that it did not meet the general plan or that the timing was not right. You could deny it. You could also table and ask us as staff or the Us as staff or the developer for further clarification, you probably noticed in my staff report when I originally wrote it. Um, I recommended that you table it because we were still waiting on a few things from the developer, we were waiting on the acknowledgement letters from water and sewer. We were also waiting on what their parks, um. Fee in lieu was going to be, we know what that is now, and we were also waiting on some kind of confirmation from you dot that this. Street layout was acceptable, so they've, they've gotten all of those, so I'll, I'll, I'll. Change my recommendation from what's in the staff report, um, that my recommendation is that you. Consider the proposal, um, in that if you feel that it beats the general plan, or if you feel. Um, that it mean that it is in the public interest, my recommendation would be that you forward a positive recommendation to the county commission. Um, we've sent out public notice to owners within five hundred feet, so there, there may be, and there are probably people here to speak. Um, and I know that the owners here as well, happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Have we received a letter from the Parks District?
We have not.
So. I think we need to stick with your model motion because we don't have anything in writing. That acknowledges, we don't have an acknowledgement letter from the Parks District, correct?
I did, I didn't request a, a letter from the Parks District.
But a reason was asking for density. Right, we're changing density.
Sure.
And part of that density or part of that request is they're, they're proposing a fee in lieu, but we don't have anything that says they've met that.
And that may be a, a valid reason to, uh, to.
How do we?
Do we have the letter with smart?
I just don't know how, I mean, until we see that agreement's been met. You know, I don't feel comfortable granting a, or forwarding a positive recommendation on until that's been met. I think that's something that needs to go in there, just like water and sewer. If that's gonna be, you know. A condition, you know, that, that's the big thing when you, when you go back a couple slides, two other big things in smart growth principles is. Connecting streets, which. I struggle a little bit with the connecting street issue where we can't tie on that other road to forty seven hundred. And that's based on a getting the, the density, and then the second thing is, is. A donation to the Parks District, but we don't have any confirmation beside, you know, the developer told her that's what they're gonna do, but. I mean, who knows if the Parks District's fine with a fee in lieu or, or what the Parks District wants. And that's not up for us to negotiate, I feel as a planning commission, that's up between the developer and the Parks District that need to negotiate that. And say, yes, we've come to an agreement, this is what it is, and you know, so I don't, I don't feel we've met those. Smart growth principles yet until we see that, I don't, commissioners, what's your thoughts on that?
I think I can rezone it if as far as the road goes with the condition that it has to meet, um, substandard road requirements. So they'd be stopped in their development until they did that. Um, I'm just wondering with the letter from the Parks District. I know we had it for smart fields, are we consistent with that now, is a, is a Parks District providing this letter consistently for us? That's my concern.
We've got parks folks here, and this is on the, on the agenda item for a public hearing, I think I'm, we're getting ahead of ourselves, let's hold the public hearing first. Um, and go into a, go through the public hearing process, and then we can take these discussions. That better Charlie?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to open a public hearing on this item.
So moved.
Do I got a second?
Second.
Lots of them. All right, uh, all those in favor, open a public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
That passes, okay, we're now in a public hearing for this item, anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? When you come up, just please state your name and address for the record, please.
Jim Flynn, fifteen seventy six Far West Drive. Um. Just like to speak a little bit about why we're here on the, uh, on the road issue. We, um, originally we met with you dot several months ago. And we worked out what we thought was an acceptable plan. And as it turned out, due to, due to your bidding from the work session. We, we went back to you dot to fine tune six hundred south. And in that going back. They came up with a different idea. That actually thwarted or undermined your West Weaver, all the work you put into the West Weaver plan, they actually. Wanted several fewer road connections to forty seven hundred. So we've been desperately trying to get a meeting with them. And, um, David Olger just got back yesterday, and so we had that meeting today. And so. If you, if you want to know what our opinion is, we want a full. Access connection of five hundred south. I, I just want that to be clear, that's, that's what we desire. What they came back with is they expect future signals at twelfth south. And fourth south. And a single connection at six hundred south. Well, Charlie did some good pushback for the county and said, hey, this is, this area is targeted. To be an urban setting for our West Weaver plan, we've done this whole West Weaver plan, and we need to have more connections. So today in the meeting, we fine tuned six hundred south, which was a precipitating event that caused the whole. Go back to you dot. But, um, what's, what you dot declared today in the meeting was, in order to have a ride in, ride out. They wanted a median to prevent left turns in, into southbound left turns into five hundred. So it came down to the meeting today. It wasn't just a simple right in, right out. It was that came with baggage, that was a median, which seemed like a very obtrusive thing. And so they defaulted back on their position and said, we said, well, we have to have fire. Because of the, the number of units, we need to have a secondary way out, they said, well, can you do a. Emergency access only, so that's, that's how that came about. And then they even, um. They even issued. Notes today. Official written notes after the meeting to that effect. So I guess I'm saying, we feel like we're a little bit caught in the, we want what you want, we want a full access there. But we've been kind of a cop between a. County and a you dot incongruity. And, uh, we're trying to do the best we can. As far as the rezone, it's, it's never been our intention to do anything that's not zoning density compliant. So we're, we've just wanted to make sure that's clear. Anyway, happy to answer any questions, I.
We're in a public hearing, right now it's just a public hearing, so we'll go into that phase in a little bit, thank you, Mr. Flynn.
Lance Peterson, treasurer for the Taylor West Weaver Parks District, I reside in unincorporated county thirty eighty, eighty one west, twenty five fifty south. Um, we as a board, uh, met with, with Cody and, and Mister Flan last week and. We're completely open to working out a fee in lieu of with them. However, that said, here's the, okay, um, let me correct something, I think Steve maybe got some misinformation. Uh, one, we have not arrived at a dollar figure for the fee in lieu of. Um, is that correct, Cody, I don't remember us talking dollar figures last week. Yeah, yeah, and. Uh, we, we were thinking maybe twenty grand per lot. Okay. Um, and number two. Um. We, we've already been working with other developers as you're aware of on M P and Luwak, so we're totally open to that. When the development is within a half mile of a park, ground that we own, okay? So the case of Stagecoach, um, Smart Fields and, uh, and Selmy. And Halcyon, they're all less than half, half a mile to our, our park that we property now that we have on eighteen hundred south. We do not have any ground, uh, close to, uh, Wilder Estates. And, and, and that there, you know, Cody is, has, has been looking at minutes and saying, well, it looks like there's a nineteen acre. Park, and I don't know if, if that's in line with, with Charlie or what, but. Um, we have not had any discussions with Mister Blanch. Uh, or his developers regarding a nineteen acre lot there, now, if we have a nineteen acre lot. Directly adjacent to his subdivision. Boom, we're good, okay? Um, but we don't have that right now, so we're a little nervous about, about that, so we will, um, we just found out about this last week. We'll try to reach out to some people and see if we can't negotiate something, I don't know where you guys all are with the Tarraki. Is it Tarraki Village that's south of this, don't know where that is in the process. Um, up until now, we've only heard of a one acre park down there, so the nineteen was totally new to us, so that's our. Our, our position right now, totally open to working with Cody, uh, uh, on, on a fee in lieu of, is. But we don't have any ground to transfer that to, so, thank you.
Mister Peterson. Anybody else wish to speak? If, uh, see none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
A motion, do I got a second? Everybody sleeping now.
Second.
A motion, a second, close the public hearing, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, perfect, thank you, we're now out of public hearing, so now Mister Flynn, we can have some discussion. If you want to come back up or maybe Cody. You can, I mean, you're welcome to come up as well.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I'll kick it off, and, and I, I, I know you guys are open to the, to the, want the road, we want the road. I mean, the, I'm gonna refer back to what Steve's presentation showed earlier. You know, as, as we look at this rezone going down to this stuff, we're looking at, you know, how it benefits the community and. And hit, no, that's why we have those smart growth principles in there. And, and the first smart growth principles is, you know, connectivity and, and how all that's gonna tie together. I mean, I know the general plan shows a trail going along the canal at some point. Um, you know, this, this plan really doesn't show us where future trail connections could be or any of that stuff. And I really struggle to see. Where the, the, the connectivity and, and the benefit of the streets layout kind of ties together, and, and I get. The, the one, the five hundred south, I mean, that's something hopefully that we could put some pressure on is putting that as part of our recommendation that we want to see you dot and kind of. You know, put some pressure on it that way that we can help see that access come, but as I look at these other streets. You know, and, and who knows when development might come, but right now we've got a streak going over the canal and. Two areas, the, the forty six hundred west, I could see that potentially at some point being a viable streak going across. But I'd like to know who's gonna build that, who's gonna tie that together. Um, whether you're gonna meet in the middle of the canal or, or how that's all gonna tie together. My concern with forty five hundred west is it's going stubborn to the south. And there's no road, there's a subdivision over there now asphalt in lots platted, and that's gonna go right in the back of someone's lot. And so I, I, I have some concern with that forty five hundred south. Being a stub road going to the south, where that's gonna. Excuse me, yes, Wes, um, yeah.
I'm like, man, I went through that.
No, yeah, that, that road there, um, you know, the, the Tarraki. Village Phase One, I believe sits right there on the other side of that, and there's not a stub road coming out of it.
And I agree with those stub roads to a degree because they are pointless in a, in a way, and I know that this is. Due to the fact that Jim and originally when we talked with, was Steve, were you involved in that and, and the alignment and stuff? I mean, obviously going over this canal, I mean. Is that canal gonna stay there forever, I, you know? And so I agree with you, in fact, those roads are sort of silly, but, uh, I mean, I'll, I'll believe them.
I think forty six hundred needs to stay, I mean, that one has the potential of going through.
Charlie, I got a question for you.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Over here on, on the five hundred south, where, where we've got the cul-de-sac penciled in right now. And a potential right in, right out. Are we gonna, are, are we, is there going to be an extension on the west side of, of forty seven hundred at that location?
I doubt it, and, and maybe at some point in the long run, but we were, I. I haven't been out there on site in person, but just doing a Google map, uh, inspection of the area, there's a pretty nice looking home right there. Um, sometimes when we see homes that are fairly rundown, seems like maybe it's time for an upgrade, sometimes in those cases we might say, let's keep it. As a possibility, but in this case, I don't see us to buying that house and turning it down.
Well, the, the reason I bring that up, just so you have the thought behind it, is the right in, right out works better over on six hundred south because of that canal. Because of the fact that you really can't see up over that canal to the south at, when you're at that intersection. So the right in, right out in my mind works better there with a full intersection or possibly even a T intersection over here on five hundred. Now, I don't know if that's something to, to keep in mind or not, I still, you know, my feeling is still that there has to be. Two entries and exits onto forty seven hundred west for this area, for, for not just this development, but. The more northern and eastern potential development, so. I'm in my mind trying to figure out how, how to make this work so that we can satisfy you dots. Issues and, uh, and still make, make it accessible, this area more accessible on, on two forty seven hundred west. So that's why I'm asking those questions, but. Um, for me, that's, you know, that, that's, that's gotta happen, I mean, I don't know if, if that can be swung over that road a little. I, i- is part of the problem with you dot. At, at that intersection, the discussion you had with them today is, is, is that because it's too close, those two, those two are too close together?
So correct me if I'm wrong, Charlie, as our, as our conversation, the reason that they, they even did the emergency. One was obviously, so we have an in and out, number one. But, uh, you dot was talking about the fact that, from what I gathered, that eventually would, they would rather see. The road coming further into the north, and I believe you have that, this signal, the light where they were showing the intersection that for Semaphores. You don't have that one. But they talked about where the actual intersection would be, um, as far as lights go down forty seven hundred. And that, um, is further to the north, and so. Accommodating future road through, say, four thousand west, connecting to further to the north. Then, obviously, then he talked about hard barricading, you know, after the fact. Once that would develop or whatever, to hard barricade that, so that then actually this would just be a cul-de-sac. And it would continue to go and come out back on forty seven hundred.
Further north, up where the semaphore is gonna potentially be.
They were though, uh. They were thinking about the distance between them, they're going like two hundred and sixty five feet plus hundred foot of storage. Coming from both sides, they didn't think there's, uh, the, the distance that they wanted between six hundred and five.
Five hundred and.
We, we thought they would be, initially, they were, they were happy initially with the layout because they always seek to have, uh, shared accesses. So the five hundred south went well with eliminating the existing duplex access. And the whole intent of the six hundred south was to, uh, not have. To give the potential for that house to the south to be incorporated into six hundred south. So that was, that was the initial reasoning behind it all.
Well, but it, and it also matches up with this potential street right across forty seven hundred over there on six hundred as well, that puts you in alignment with that as well.
Now, that, that actually we shift back a little further south, I just didn't, that's what maybe I said.
Six hundred also becomes the midpoint between four hundred and nine hundred, um, like Jim mentioned. Um, I think there are other issue with, um, well, the, I think the other. Subject of the concern is the three dimensional world, which is the hump going up over the canal, I don't know, I didn't get a sense that, uh, our friends over at you dot. Were looking at that area from a three dimensional perspective, I think we're just looking at paper maps or, uh, you know, two dimensions, so I don't know if they would. Rather see that push further north, that once we drive out there and do a site visit.
I know that there's a, a owner, the owner of the existing duplex is here, and they've seen you talk a little bit about it now. Maybe that would give you some perspective, since she's up there for. If that would help.
From the duplex, and the duplex is further away, I mean, I think there's plenty of sight distance out of that duplex.
I'm sorry about the canal.
But.
Well, I, I, you know, my concern is I've, I've traveled that road a fair amount, and there at six hundred, it. If you're in a low, a low profile vehicle, it, it's gonna pose a little bit of a problem, see if over that home. Unless you dot raises that, you know, raises the grade of that whole road when they redo it at some point in time, that's probably not gonna happen in the real near future, so.
I think that's where they proposed the light, is that correct?
Uh, twelfth and fourth.
Yeah, the light for twelve streets out the bed right now. It's coming fast.
Good.
But one of four hundred isn't anytime soon.
They want to build it before the county asks for a roundabout again.
Yep. I've been working on those, with those plans today, actually. Anyways, so, I, I mean, I guess, and maybe this is a question more for, for Steve on this one. On how. The, how we met those, the, the connectivity. The, how we met those, the, the connectivity, um, part of the smart growth. We'll stay on roads before we jump to parks.
Yeah, if you look at my staff report, I made a comment about how. Sorry, I guess I'm not displaying my staff report, but I made a comment about how these roads line up with our um, expected roads as shown on. The street regulating plan for the village area um, and our, and our master plan. And, you know, before even submitting, um, Jim and Cody came into the office and he came, met with us over. You know, online and wanted to show us, hey, does this, does this alignment work for you? Um, and through a lot of back and forth, we, we came up with an alignment that we felt did meet. Block length requirements and, and like I mentioned, it complies with our existing plans.
So tell me on forty five hundred west, because this puts a little bit more into perspective. Well, now you, you changed me. You went away.
I'm going to show you this. I'll show you, I'll, maybe bringing up the street regulating plan might be helpful. Go ahead.
I guess it's more just in relation to what's existing and already there on the other side of the canal. My concern.
On the south side of the canal.
I mean, I, I like forty six, or excuse me.
Forty-five.
I gotta look at her. I like forty six hundred west. I mean, that one makes total sense. But a stub on forty five hundred doesn't make any sense to me. Going across there because you're going into the back of. Where those lots are.
Yeah, let me, let me see if I can bring something up here.
Yeah, how does that line up with at least? Put it all the way east and at the east of, of Cherokee.
There is no road out of Cherokee coming that way.
Not that far east, right?
That's not parts, yeah.
So, as Steve is pulling this up, um, the fifty five hundred is on the eastern edge. Of phase two of the Cherokee project. Uh, and phase two uh, lost its entitlement and so it's got to go through the process again. So the whole point that we would make is. Let's get a road right there and let's stick with kind of a grid network where this is a more dense area. Or planned to be a more dense area. Let's, let's try and stick with a grid network here. And then as you feather out beyond the canal and outward, uh, you know, less grid is okay, but. Okay, that was, that was the perspective. Doesn't have to be the.
So it ties into the old phase two, which no longer is phase two.
Correct.
I was mistaken. I thought it tied into phase one.
And that's, and that's forty-six, forty-five, forty-five.
You can see that right here. Just, and I, I guess that was in, in my report, I'm saying, look, they're, they're complying with our plans for. The future development in the area. They're looking at our street regulating map. Yeah, you can see that connection right here, forty five hundred.
Looks good. Straighten me out. Has to happen every once in a while.
And, and if those roads existed, I wouldn't have nearly as much concern on forty seven hundred. But we don't know. That Cherokee project is, is flexible.
I would say inflex.
Don't make me say anymore.
So I guess the question would be, and Charlie or Steve, maybe you can help me answer this or help me understand this one. So where we have those two coming together. Well, yet we have the canal in the middle, which is canal property. Who's going to make the connection? Or how do those connections get made at that point?
Steve, you want to take it? Um, that would normally, if, if it were rezoned and no one asked the question, it would be um, the responsibility of the owner who's. Property, who owns the property on which that connection needs to be made. Developer may choose to approach the county commission and, and our office and we may need to talk to the other owner to figure out exactly where that's at. And that's probably what we should do is by the time this gets to the county commission, maybe there's some kind of development agreement that specifies what their responsibility would be. So there's, the, the answer is it depends. There's a few different options. One is we don't say anything. It's going to be whoever owns the property is going to make that connection. Two, they could go to the county commission and adjacent owners and we could. Figure out whose responsibility it's going to be.
So, a, and, but this is where my problem gets into. I mean, I, I get it. The, the development on the property on the south side can make the connection to there. But we can't, I don't feel we're, it's right for us to put the burden on hooker irrigation. To tie those two roads in for us.
I, I totally agree. Uh, development. Should be paid by developers.
So that, that's, I, I just want that cleared up, uh, you know, as part of this, so we know. Who's going to get it across the canal, even if it's a stub road to nowhere until the next property develops. I just. Just because it's not property to property, we've got someone else in the middle.
Hooker irrigation owns the land that needs to have a connection over the top of it.
The canal.
They're, but they're not going to pay for it.
They allow a developer to build. A stub over the top.
Well, I'm, I'm sure they would. I, I, I mean, I'm sure they're willing to work with us, just like. I mean, it's our future plans. Otherwise, we're going to have roads that dead end and nowhere because of the canals in the way.
Cause there's lots of.
Yeah.
But we could work with the applicant to build a jump.
I like it.
I, I'm of the peace of mind that you ask the, the uh, applicant who's in front of you to try and make those improvements uh, to the best of their ability. But when it comes to those improvements also benefiting somebody else, if I was an applicant, I'd ask for a pioneering agreement or a payback agreement. Um, fortunately for us, there's only one owner, owner across the canal that this is going to stub into. And so we can always get the applicant and the um, other landowner together. So you guys can always uh, refer this to the county commission. If you want to uh, offer a recommendation for approval based on the need. To have whoever's building first. Build the uh, bridge over the canal or, or whatever they're going to do with that canal to make that connection and then award them back some kind of a.
What if we met them in the middle? We have two. Like, uh, this developer put in one and we make the other.
Oh.
When they bring the other one, you know, the other.
I think that's a fantastic idea.
And then I, then I feel it's pretty fair on both sides because I don't feel we should put the burden all on. You know, on, on one developer, because we don't know when the other side's going to come, but at least this way. The, the connections are made and, you know.
When you said meet him in the middle, I was trying to figure out how to cantilever halfway over the canal.
You're going to build a bridge halfway across that canal and then it's going to sit.
The only. So, so how, how much can you fo- hold the other potential developers' feet to the fire on where those connections are going to be made and if they'll meet up?
We have a mandatory requirement already in our ordinance that says if it's stubbed in from an adjacent property, you need to pick up that stub and run it.
Perfect. To make sure that, that, that eye is dotted and crossed. Because of the potential.
Anything else on streets? I think we've beat this one up and I think we've met. I, I appreciate staff helping us and, and applicant, you know, helping us see the. I can see it now. I kind of had blurred vision in the beginning.
I mean, let me ask the question, one question. Do you see, I mean, you say. I mean, the forty six hundred west is the one that connects the best according to Steve's plan, right? That one comes straight through. Do you see a reason to continue the forty six hundred west one as well across the canal?
Yes, I, I think they both need to be there.
To the connectivity.
Based on, you know, the street regulating plan, like Steve said, and when we put all that work into that and as part of the plan, I think I now see why they're both there. But I, I think, you know, as far as what. You should be required to put in is only one of them. You stub to the edge of your property with one and you stub across the canal with the other. In my opinion, that's my thoughts about that. And I think that's pretty fair. And then. Because that's there, like Charlie said, by ordinance, when they come to develop the other side, they're going to meet both of those and they'll have to tie in which one we don't. Anything else on streets? Okay. Parks, my, the other. Part of this one and, and I, I feel that. I have some concern with the parks. I mean, you know, just like. Uh, Mr. Peterson stated, um. You know, we, we haven't reached, I, I, and I get the develop, the, the applicants willing to work and how that's going to be. But until we see that and we know what that, that they've come to a resolution. Um, I mean, in my opinion, there's, there's a couple options here I think we can do to keep the process moving. And Liam, I see you perk up, make sure I'm speaking this right and Charlie. I, I think we could, you know, if we are comfortable with this and we do want to pass this rezone on. I think we could just put that condition as before, before the rezone goes to the county commission that. That agreement's been made between the parks district and the, and the um, developer on. Whatever that is going to be, whether it's fee and loop profit, however, them guys work it out, that's not our, we don't have a dog in the fight. We just need to know that. We're either getting open space or, you know, somehow it's, it's paying into the community. Um, as part of those smart growth principles, so um. I don't know, thoughts on that? I, I just, I, I, I don't want to stall you up. I, I think that's the. I don't have any other concerns with this other than that.
I just, Chair, I'm, I'm wondering if that's still stalling them up because from hearing from Lance, it sounded like there wasn't. Nowhere to go because they don't have the space. Am I saying that correct?
Well, I, I think that they're, at least they could still stop. They don't have to come back to us. If we table it, they got to come back to us. If we put the condition on it. It doesn't come back to us. It just has to be meant for it goes to county commission. That's where I think i- it's going to keep the process moving. So. Any other thoughts on that? That's how the table's been kind of quiet tonight.
Wait, I. We don't have a letter, but we at least have both parties here. So I think that gives me more comfort in moving forward with the requirement listed.
That they at least get.
Yeah.
Come to some resolution before. And because, you know, as, as we mentioned, I mean, the. That this is a legislative items when we, when we have some teeth to ask for these things. You know, related to the rezone and stuff and the bene- better benefit of the community. So.
I know we left streets, but the only other thing that you did mention that I'm a little concerned about is we don't see any trails. Alright. Some sort of a trail system through here to, where do they connect in the general plan?
Forty-seven hundred west is expected to have a ten foot wide pathway that they'll have to install. Um, we have also, and it's something I, I should have put in my staff report, but. Just given their request for a bunch of fifteen thousand square foot lots, I figured sidewalk would be enough. Um, if they do go to the county commission, if they get through, if they get through the planning commission, they go to the county commission and request. Seventy-two lots to maximize their possible density under medium density or, or R one fifteen. What I'm going to do is request that they have some pathways um, interspersed throughout the, the, the mid block. Um, to make sure that we are also getting some pathway. Instead of just sidewalk, both pathway and sidewalk throughout the development.
And that could be some of those straight adjacent pathways and stuff like that, similar to what we've seen on smart fields, basically, right?
Sure.
So you're talking about in the development agreement, is the development agreement? Before they go to county commission? I would assume, we're just talking about the rezone here. But in the draft, before they go to county commission, you can specify the concerns that, that we have about um, trails and. I think it's a canal connection is something we'd want to list in. In our recommendations.
Yeah, our expectation as staff, if they move forward and, and ask for, you know, seventy-two lots. Um, or a con- some kind of concept that shows a, a, you know, rough number of around seventy, seventy-two lots. Um, we would expect that concept plan to also show the pathway.
Okay.
And as far as parks and recreation goes, um, I think the pathway on the canal would be a, a great asset for that community. And this is a, a good linear chunk of the beginning of that from forty-seven hundred over to the, uh, almost the back of the um, school, so. Just putting the bug in your ear and, and maybe the park districts here that, that might be a worthwhile linear park. To put if there's no land in that area.
I agree with Charlie on that. I think of forty-seven.
Now, we're right there.
Trail and forty-seven hundred is going to be widened eventually up soon, right? And that trail will be gone.
Maybe even the, well, I mean, granted where that's the park or the irrigation company's ground with that canal is all covered through there, so they might be in favor of that. I know there's concern of open water, but there's no open water, but it's all covered. So that could be a, could be a potential solution to that, but I, I think, yeah. Just some suggestions potentially that parks and you guys can work out. But I do think on the general plan, Steve, doesn't that show a trail going through there? On our parks and trails map. Isn't that?
Along the canal?
Yes.
Yeah. It, it does, yeah. Uh, it doesn't specify which side.
Yeah, it, I mean, it, it just, this just shows on top of that canal in that area and I. I'm curious.
I think. I think it's still open at forty-one hundred west. I think the canal, I can't remember where it goes into the pipe. I think it's still open at forty-one, but I can't remember for sure.
Looking at the. The map of it, it's closed through there, so I think we're okay.
Through this.
It is, yeah.
It is.
It's just like.
Right, and the branch ditches that come off of it.
And even if it's not, um, we could potentially, uh. Wanted to say kill two birds with one stone, let people get mad at me whenever I threaten animals. Um, we could do two things at once, potentially. Um, I mean, if it's a matter of investing a couple grand uh, per lot or whatever, the park district. And the applicant settle on, um, maybe you can get any open water piped, just like the general plan says that we want. And then you can get a path on top of it. Uh, just comes down to how far that dollar can be stretched.
Are, are we comfortable in the recommendation? Stating that we'd like, we would need a trail on forty seven. Along the canal.
But I, I think to that point there now. Um, I wish Steve you'd have brought this up a lot quicker and made me not look like such an idiot. But I don't think, I mean, I, I had a lot of discussion on pushing across that canal. It's not your property. It's not, I thought, hope we're on that chunk to there. That's Cherokee's property, so I think those points are, are kind of mute points at this point. Yep. So. Seeing that now. Steve, why'd you make me look like a fool? Yeah, see there. But it's, it's not, it's just an easement, ba- basically, it's not a. So yeah, all that stuff we talked about.
The park district is always uh, excited to work with developers on trailways. So uh, Sarah, we'd be happy to talk to Cody and, and Mr. Flint here. Jim.
I think the only, my only problem with that is.
Here, here with, with that and, and, and so. We, we can work, we're happy to work with that on the trails, just so you all.
Two owns the land.
Who owns the land? We can't go put a.
Well, well, exactly right. I was back there thinking, well, that can't count towards their open space because Hooper owns it, so.
Hooper does, Cherokee actually owns it.
The, the ground that the uh, the, the um, Hooper Canal is on. And so they just have an easement.
Yep.
Oh, bingo. Alright, so. I guess we can work with Cherokee.
Jim and Cody, since you're both so generous, you could take lots sixty-seven to seventy-eight and just make it a park.
Generous, I like that.
Be a very nice park that Lance is wanting for that whole area, right?
Actually, I already have a homeowner, homeowner that spoke for that corner, so.
Are they okay with the park in there back there?
I probably have to talk to them.
No, I'm just giving you.
No, yeah, we'll probably, I mean, withholding ponds and walk paths and things like that, obviously. I mean, all we're wanting for is to push towards rezoned, be approved. And they are uh, one fifteen um, conforming with everything that we've got, so we can continue to press forward with. Um, giving an actual. Plot of what we want and how we're going to do it in conformance with all the roads and everything else to. And obviously larger density would be making that pathway. And I think Steve said within four hundred feet of each other. So it would consist of something in the middle because we're like five hundred and eighty feet between roads. I'm glad that you said that sidewalks count because I was a little concerned, like, why do we even put in sidewalks if those don't count for a walk path? So.
Well, they're wider, so what, it would be a ten foot path.
I'll do a five foot sidewalk.
They'll be ten. They count for trails.
Brandon, I will paint it during the.
Trail adjacent. It's ten, right, Charlie?
The sidewalk or the trail?
The trail part.
If, if it's a trail, it's adjacent to the street, it's a ten foot trail. Um, on the other side of the road would be a four foot sidewalk. Um, and then on the other streets that, other streets that don't require the trail, uh, would be five foot sidewalks on both sides.
Perfect. Alright. Now that uh. We've discussed, I got anything else? Alright, I'll throw one out there. My, my, I can't make the motion, but I'll give some ideas for you. My thoughts anyways. My thoughts anyways.
Instead, we have the water sewer. Want to make sure that we have letters.
We do have those.
They do have water. I think the recommendation just need to be that they work out the the street regulating with the trails to meet the ordinance prior to going to county commission. And that a, that a uh, or an agreement's been made between the developer and the parks district. Prior to going to county commission, and really outside of that, I think. You know, they're meeting the, the ordinance, right? Charlie, Steve? Okay. And I think, you know, I I think we put the recommendation in there about the, at least the right in, right out. On six hundred, because I I think that'll throw some weight when when they actually go to subdivision through UDOT.
Well, we can't approve. This one can't approve more than. Thirty, so we we have to require that it builds more than thirty lots, they need.
Or I I mean, it could be an emergency, but then we'll get to that when we get to subdivision, but I I think if we put that as part of our recommendation. You know, at least leaning on UDOT to do that right in, right out for the rezone, you know, to meet the street.
So to say that um. Must have access, seven hundred West.
It's gonna, I I I don't know.
That's how DOT re- I mean, uh, DOT. Um, was very specific on making sure that it was a emergency access. Uh, that we finished the road to forty seven hundred, so it was an emergency access, so they, so it does conform with what DOT is requesting.
So we can't approve. Lots in the area.
When we come to subdivision, that's right.
Well, actually, we can because they do have an access. It's just a fire access.
Fire access for in and out.
Division at that.
Then you have, yeah.
Got an emergency access. But right now, we're we're going into this blind that we don't know how many lots are are really, I mean, they could put seventy two in here. Based on, you know, the.
If everything that.
Yeah, but I mean, like, like Cody mentioned, he's gotta look at drainages and, you know, the trails and all that, so this, what we're looking at is gonna tweak a bunch. So.
So what language do you think then for the?
How do we, how do we word that in the motion, so we?
Help you to understand the importance, some sort of access.
I think just making the statement, um, I mean, what in in your motion, just making the statement, uh. We recommend approval and we further direct staff and ask the county commission to work with you dot to get that. Uh, right in, right out, access on forty seven hundred.
At a minimum, right in, right out.
Yep.
Potentially a full access.
Well, what if they deny it?
That's why.
Charlie mentioned it like several times, and he was, he denied him several times and said emergency exit, so.
But.
I know Charlie could go above him, but I'm just saying to put that stipulation on it without having DOT here.
It won't be like a condition if it, if they flat out deny it and deny it, I could, I don't, I don't say let's push it through as that's pending on that.
Right.
Let's just put some weight on it so that when the political powers get to be and and the commission starts talking and you dot starts talking, things change. I mean, Dave Algar can read the prints, but I mean, Todd Finlayson wasn't in the meeting and and either Kim or or Carrie's gonna be the one that's gonna make the final determination. And when political pressure comes into place, things could change, so.
Say, ask you not to approve right in.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that, Chair? So we're asking for that right in, right out. If we, that's for one um entrance and exit right now, still, it's still, no, that's if we had to.
Yes.
For the second one.
This one stays. Minimum right in, right?
And we don't, is there verbiage we want with um Commissioner Povero's um recommendation of it being on the south end?
He wants it right, he wants uh right in, right out.
No, it 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 doesn't work there, so never mind, okay, discussion point, I needed some clarification.
Clarify for me then, thank you.
With with planning staff. The staff can work that out through there, you know, a- as long as it meets the intent of the ordinance or what the ordinance says, which they're gonna do that anyways as they go through and draft the. The development agreement, so.
Staff, through a development agreement, do I specify?
The rezone will all be based on the development agreement because it's not part of the form base. So every reason that comes through has to have a development agreement.
I don't need to specify the development agreement.
Yep.
Regulation with trails free to. Donation agreed upon. And ask you not to approve right in.
At a minimum of five hundred.
South.
North.
South.
North.
No, it's south. It's south, sorry.
We're over the hump.
One, two, and three, it looks like two or three.
I think we just do the three that we just come up with. Commissioners, anything else? Anything else?
Not right now, thanks man.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
I know, I'm just making sure I'm on the right, the right, it's four point two, right? Okay. Um, recommend that we approve or forward a positive. Recommendation for item four point two, ZMA twenty twenty three dash zero eight. Um, a public hearing to consider proposal to rezone twenty five point zero eight acres from A one agricultural to R one. Fifteen residential zone. With the following recommendations, that street regulation with trails is agreed upon with planning staff. A parks donation is agreed upon with the parks district. And that you dot is asked to approve right in, right out access at five hundred south. Um, we do this with the findings that uh this proposal meets the general plan.
Perfect, I got a motion, give me a second. Got a second, any discussion on the motion? Okay, Commissioner Neville.
Hi.
Commissioner Wickham.
Hi.
Commissioner Faverell.
Hi.
Commissioner Andreaody. Commissioner McCormick.
Hi.
Chair votes, I as well, that passes. Hey, next item. The item four point three ZTA twenty two zero two three dash zero four, a public hearing. To consider a county initiated ordinance amendment to implement water wise landscaping regulations that align with the. Weaver Basin Water Conservancy District's turf removal incentives. Burton?
Yes, commissioners, um, we also held a work session on this, I believe, also back in June. Um, and I got some good feedback from you. Um, so we have scheduled a public hearing, posted public notice. And I'll go over this with you. This is a, as was mentioned, a county initiated ordinance amendment. To change our, some of our landscaping rules to be more strict when it comes to. Uh, lawn that can be watered. We want it to be water wise landscaping, and the intent behind that is so that. Residents in the unincorporated area can take advantage of some uh programs from the state and Weaver Basin. Um, they are the lawn conversion program and they're also the flip your strip program. Um, so just to to reiterate on that. The only way that residents can take advantage of that, those programs through Weaver Basin is if we adopt very specific regulations. It is kind of a controversial thing. A lot of people don't like that Weaver Basin forces jurisdictions to do this. But a lot of people enjoy the benefit of those programs. Uh, there's quite a bit of. Um, financial incentive for homeowners to convert some of their um park strip and their lawn. So that they're not using as much water. So basically, what we did is we went through the ordinance and we took out um. The allowances that we currently have for things like turf grass, and we restricted them to the. To what what Weaver Basin is suggesting, so I'll go over some of those with you. Uh, let me know if you think I should go line by line, but I was. Since we've already kind of been over it, I'll, I'll just go over the um. What we're proposing, I also will touch on a few things uh from from some feedback I got from you. So the first section change is in the county's design review. Ordinance, section one oh eight dash one dash four, considerations in review of applications, we are saying under. C three F, let's see, sorry, three, C three. There's a C, sorry, C seven F. We used to talk about no more than fifty percent of landscaping requirement. Um, you can use turf grass to accomplish number of fifteen. Fifty percent of landscape requirement, we are proposing to that with with um. I, we are proposing to eliminate those and just reference this new section that says how much turf grass any new project can use. Going down to line sixteen, this is the county standards for architectural landscape screening design standards that apply to. Multi-family projects, they apply to commercial, industry, oh, sorry, commercial, some industrial projects, basically anything except for. I believe, except for the M, M one, M two, M three for now. Um, it used to talk about. Sites shall have a minimum lands, a minimum of twenty percent of total lot, lot area landscape, we still think that is necessary. But we said um that eighty percent needed to be living plant material, um, as you know, that requires water, so. We are uh proposing to eliminate that, we're just saying twenty percent needs to be landscaped, landscape it in in rock. Or or bark some other way, and then in B on line twenty two, we are again referencing um this new section that says. Refer to this to to know how much um area you can, you can plant in turf grass, irrigated turf grass. Going down to line twenty six, we specifically are going into our rules about park strips, park strips, and we're saying. Park strips have to comply with with a man, uh, in a manner that complies with the following. One, two, and three, you'll see before online thirty four, it said that you actually had to plant a native grass mixture. And that is one thing that um we know we need to get rid of, and it's something that um Weaver Basin requires for this. Program for their programs, so we're saying all park strips shall be landscaped with six inch angular rock. Park strip may be interspersed with drought tolerant shrubs, ornamental grasses and flowering plants. I took some feedback I got. I believe from Commissioner Wicker, I think before in our work session, we said. We we we, it was proposed that we would mandate that those things be planted, but. There are some landscaped park strips that look really nice with just rock, and so we we didn't mandate that they plant. Um, shrubs or grasses. But it is an option, go ahead.
I said a question on this section, and I appreciate that that change. My other concern is the six inch angular rock. Now, I know it is more durable and lasts longer. But is that something that's required by Weaver Basin, or is that something just?
That's something that we've looked at closely with our engineers. We've gone back and forth with them for a few years and in coming up with a um. A street cross section that that we feel that works for our engineers, works for. Planning, good planning principles, uh, we feel that six in, six inch angular angular rock fits within the park strip. Um, happy to get some other feedback if you think there should be another, or do you think there maybe should just be a couple of different options?
It's rare for people to be putting in that large of rock, and it's difficult to find, and it's hard to. To create, you know, a decorative zone with different sizes and colors and shapes if you're limited to basically large river rock. And so I I I don't know that we'll get something very aesthetically pleasing. I haven't noticed the smaller rocks being a problem, um, so I'm, I'm interested in what what feedback, I I know it can. Um, I it can decompose faster, but um. Yeah, so that would be my only concern. I think that's very limiting and I, I'd probably just stick with whatever Weaver Basin is recommending personally.
Okay, and they they didn't actually say anything, they just said you can't, you can't plant grass, that's gonna be irrigated.
And a lot of um places, I've seen them just do drip systems and where they do sparsely plant, but they're using. Well, it can be sometimes bark or sometimes, what is it called? It's that um like a mulch. Um, sometimes that's easier to maintain than even a rock where you get weeds and rock and get weeds and everything. I I mean, anything can look awful if it's not maintained, anything, and so I'm just concerned about main mandating too much. I don't, I don't know that we'll get a lot of great looks. I think we'll just get the same thing.
I think there were a few concerns. I think one of them came down to um the idea of bark or smaller rocks. Getting into, you know, the storm drain or the gutters and things like that. I know. Um, when the county redid our our building a few years ago, we initially did plant mulch or bark where you see the six inch angular rock. And one, one day we had a bad rainstorm and there was bark all over our parking lot, and I realized that probably is just more of a uh. Our issue for not making sure it was installed properly, because you're right, I've seen some bark look really nice and not be an issue. But I think um in talking to our engineers, that same with rock, um, I think there was a concern with. Maybe kids picking up smaller rocks and throwing them at each other or or people. Or into the right of way, and I guess they could still do that with the six inch rock, I don't think that changes.
Causes more damage.
When this, might as well. When the snowplow pitches those six inch ones, though, it does a lot more damage.
But it's heavier, it it it's more likely to stay in the park strip, I think is what they're.
I mean, they chip coat the road, so I think we're kind of. Lost all.
But happy to to take whatever advice you have on that, maybe uh, maybe we could do a couple of different options there.
I I agree, I feel like we should. The six inch is hard to get now, it's because more people are trying to get that. Um, but it is sold out a lot, just grants, bark is a bad idea. Just because of what Steve's saying, it it's not that you guys put it down wrong unless I put it down wrong and everybody else has seen.
It depends on where you live. If you have a lot of wind, it's a problem. If you don't, then it's actually not.
Yeah, I can see, I know we're gonna beat this death like we did, it's.
Yeah.
Coming to the lighting thing.
Yeah.
But. I think, I I agree that there should be more options. Instead of just the six inch, but whether, whether, one other point with the six inch, though, is safety. I saw one of my neighbor kids, my neighbor has the six inch, he fell off his bike on the sidewalk, landed on that six inch, and it's a lot more destructive to that. Little kid than it is if it would have been smaller rock, big gas to his head because of that, so. Not that that's always, you know, preventable anyways, but I just think that there should be more options.
Commissioners, this goes a little bit beyond uh the ordinance that Steve is working on. Um, the the county is working on a new street cross section and that. That we will expect of developers, and we've started implementing it on a development agreement by development agreement basis. Uh, where that does have that six inch angular rock, so the expectation is that's the baseline. Um, but I agree that if the landowner wants to do something different than the six inch, that we should have minimum standards for that. We just wanted to make sure that it was landscaped and not with grass and not with weeds by the developer. After that, if the landlord wants to do something different, maybe we allow for options.
Weeds are drought tolerant.
That is true, a number of weeds are drought tolerant.
For um commercial, when we're looking more commercial, but. I personally think as long as they're using drip irrigation, anything goes residential, um, because I think there are problems residential with any. Solutions, um, I think any of them will look bad and any of them would look good, so I'd like, I would like the freedom residential, I can see picking up something. Consist more consistent for commercial.
And I should say, should specify, I should have specified as well, this this section does apply to. More of the commercial and and uh multi-family institutional uses, where we would expect to see that kind of uniform across the board. It will, I'll get, I I can't quite remember what we say when we're talking about subdivisions, but I'll, I think it might be down a little bit.
I wasn't sure, yeah. It just says park strips.
Do we just change it, say, all park strip within a commercial zone?
I don't know that we need to, because this zone, this uh one oh eight two doesn't normally apply to like a single family subdivision.
I guess it's just trying to see this in context. I don't, I don't know where we are, I guess.
Yeah, so one oh eight two five, that is uh the the architectural landscape and screening design standards that it specifically applied like commercial. Multi-family. Institutional uses.
Okay. Applies in them basically.
Those are.
Get down to one oh eight, seven, twelve is where this will play more to a subdivision standard?
Yeah.
Just in, in A, B goes back to commercial.
That entire section, one oh eight dash two is not applicable to residential.
Yeah.
You'll, um.
Okay.
We actually, I.
For the single family.
Yeah, and I'll I'll get to the residential, I think more of your question, um, Commissioner Wickham is um. One oh eight, seven, twelve, when it talks about um. That has. See, when it it actually just says you can't, you just can't use turf grass. Um, so there there are options there in in a normal, single family residential subdivision.
So, okay, so there aren't currently restrictions on residential, these are just the commercial restrictions. Okay, so there aren't currently restrictions on residential, these are just the commercial restrictions. Park strips can be flipped in a residential zone according to what you've written here, as long as they're not getting into a grass.
Yeah.
Which I do have a comment back, but.
Okay, great.
I I think still a little bit of flexibility within the commercial zone, but I can at least swallow it if it's just commercial, but. We'll have all the commercial zones doing the same thing, and it's going to be expensive, difficult for them.
Reason why the engineers wanted six inch angular is because. They don't want people parking on the park strip, and we're doing a type G gutter, which is a rolled gutter, not a high back curb. And so they're really concerned about having people just pull off, yeah, they're really concerned about people just pulling off of that park strip. Um, it's, I think their concern is even heightened even more uh 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 in residential subdivisions, because the state just passed a. A rule that said counties cannot require residential um streets to be wider, asphalt to be wider than thirty-two feet. Um, our engineers wanted thirty-six feet, so there was enough space for people to park, for a bike lane and for um uh uh travel them. So now they're gonna be even more concerned without high back curb, that people are gonna be parking on that. I don't know that I'm worried about it, I think it it'll happen and it won't happen. The six inch angular was just a deterrent, but maybe we can get, go back to the drawing board on that with them and rethink it.
I mean, they're worried about the rolled back area, but everywhere else.
Yeah. Yeah. Cool, I'll keep going. Let's see, the next line, um, all plantings shall be maintained by the landowner in compliance with section one oh eight, seven. Dash seven. Dash uh seven dash seven point zero three zeros, that's what it says. And what the reason for that is, we, you know, we want to make sure that people can see if there's, if it's, it's on the corner, they need to keep their plants lower than two feet. And there, so basically there is to be a a distance of, uh, I think it's two to eight feet, and it needs to be clear visibility to oncoming traffic. Uh, or just to the intersection in general, rather. Um, three, uh, in subdivisions where trees are required to be installed within park strips. The landowner is required to install drip system with drip emitters rated at a gallon. At a fi- at five gallons per hour less, um, that five gallons per hour less. Emitters, that is um recommended by Weaver Basin, um, just a low. Uh, low emission drip system. Went down to where it talks about ground cover, it said ground cover may be used in place of turf grass. Um, realize they've got some like comments on display here. Uh, just to me or or in our office, we just felt that it should say to uh rather than in in place of turf grass, it should say to meet landscaping area requirements. That's what we're proposing there, getting rid of some language that is suggesting language, but nothing with any teeth, because it's kind of pointless, right? Uh, it is strongly recommended. We're actually just gonna require that you do drought tolerant, so we're getting rid of some strong, strongly encouraged language. Again, same thing on uh line fifty-five here. Previously, the designer view chapter talked about. Um, in areas where. It's it's landscape between the parking and the street, we allowed turf grass as an option. Um, we don't want them to, we, so we wanted to remove that and just. Again, refer to that ordinance that says how much you can use. Um, so just to propose, getting rid of that as an option. Um, let's see, I'll keep going, last, I think last page here, this is the new section. Um, the following water-wise landscaping standards apply to all new development. A in a single family res- in single family residential developments, no more than thirty-five percent of the front and side yard of a lot or parcel, and no more than. Three thousand square feet of a of total lot area may be irrigated turf grass. Um, at work session, we were originally proposing two thousand. Um, took some feedback from the planning commission and just built that up another thousand figured.
Are you willing to take a little more feedback from the commission? I I still think, so to put in perspective, out must be where we have mostly one acre lots. That means that they can at most, so if you assume like a hundred and fifty by three hundred foot parcel, that's a kind of a typical one acre lot. Um. So you have like a.
We don't see one acre no more, we see.
But there's still going to be plenty of one acre, I mean, this is a portion, but we're gonna see plenty of one acre, and for a long time, you're gonna see one acre lots. And so we've got. Fifty, let's say you have like a fifty foot setback, fifty feet for your house, that leaves. Um, like two hundred by hundred fifty feet, anyway, what I'm getting at is three thousand square feet is only ten percent of an acre backyard. What do you, what else do you do? I I think we leave it on Weaver Basin. To start charging for water, so people figure out their own way to use. Their 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 money and. I I just wouldn't put a requirement in more. That I guess it's weird that you can have more grass in your front and your side yard than you can in your backyard in this scenario, and then for those people who have. Very small yards, I'd like that it says no more than three thousand, because I think if you have a small yard, you should be allowed to have the whole thing grass. Um. Because you're having a very small portion of yards, we can't just say across the board, everyone gets thirty-five percent, because then someone with a very small yard. It's very little grass. Um, I, so my recommendation, I would love to see the thirty-five percent consist for the backyard, and it can be either three thousand square feet. Or thirty-five percent, whichever one is greater.
As long as they pay for the water, the water.
They need to pay for it, yes.
The things we're missing here, and we missed it here for hundred years, we're living in a desert. We got a little bit of a taste of it over these last drop years. But the thing of it is, you go where there's a desert. Where there's more rainfall there than there is here, and there's hardly any grass. And so I'm thinking that, you know, sooner or later, we're gonna have to bite this bone. But I think we need to bite it now, because I don't think we can continually to think that the rains are gonna come. Because I just, I just think that it's. Not wise to use the water, you know, and part of me says, oh, if a guy can afford eight hundred bucks a month, water is. Thirty by thirty piece, maybe. But the thing of it is, it shouldn't be just fifteen dollars more a month. It should be something to work, it gets in the pocket. Because, you know. If if I use an extra thousand gallons out where I live. It's nothing, but I don't use that water, water, I don't have a lot. But if I did, it should be maybe. I don't know, twenty-five dollars a thousand gallons or thirty, I don't know, but I just think that. We can't keep count on having all this green space here, I love it, I don't have it. But fact of life is, we're the second most air at stake, and I think we need to start thinking that way, I just don't think there's anywhere. What's my truth?
There are a lot of people with a lot of lawn and a lot of money that don't, you know, that that's no issue for them. Um, but that's one of the reasons why we wrote it the way we did, right? Nobody can have more than three thousand square feet. Um, I I agree with what has been said, I. There will still be some one acre lots, um. But I also think that somebody could look at this number and and um still put. Most or all of their landscaping in their in their backyard, but it would be limited to, yeah, either thirty-five percent or three thousand square feet, which. Um, yeah, I mean, like a, I guess a fifty by fifty areas, almost there, right, twenty two, twenty-five hundred square feet. Um, but.
If you're gonna have an acre lot, you're gonna have animals, or you're gonna have a shop, or you're gonna have, there's a reason why they wanted them bigger lots, it's not all for lawn, I like.
It's for a soccer field for a lot of people, for their children.
That's what parks for.
We, we don't have enough parks right now, and we won't for years, and we have a big shortage of grassy fields, so. It's hard for me to limit a homeowner who has put in the infrastructure to at least. I mean, you put in a residential home, you have to irrigate your yard. And we've got a lot of our water being flood irrigated. Some of it for profit, some of it for just personal farming use for their own horses, so. It's it's just kind of a sensitive point when we go through a drought and we get rid of. We get rid of childhood amenities, we get rid of pools, we shut down splash pads, and then we flood irrigate. So if it was even across the board and everyone was being sensitive to it. I I would be a little more open to it, but I just don't think this is the place to regulate it, I think um. We we need the water districts to. Step up and. Yeah, I don't know, I I personally won't.
Aren't aren't these just regulations so that if they want to get and the money back from Weaver Basin?
This applies to all new builds.
We even have to.
Regulating each hour.
Everything new.
Everything, everything new.
I personally like what it says, I think this is the direction that we need to go, like Commissioner Andrew Ody states, we live in a drought, we need to act like it. Or we live in a desert, we need to act like it, so with that.
So my recommendation is that it's thirty-five percent or three thousand, that would be what I would approve.
You said whichever is.
Greater.
Greater, whichever gives them more.
More grass, yeah.
I guess we gotta back up, this is public hearing.
I'll keep going, you want me to keep going?
Yeah, let's get through this, so we can take the public hearing off.
This, or I forget. This section, uh, B is specific to the uh Weaver Basin uh lawn conversion program. It says in commercial, industrial, institutional, and multi-family developments, no more than fifteen percent of the total landscaped area may be irrigated turf grass. This provision shall not apply to active recreational areas that meet the design and landscape standards of Weaver Basin Water Conservancy District. And C, irrigated turf grass in a park strip. And any other yard area with a width of less than eight feet is prohibited. So this is the real, this is the the section that Weaver Basin is gonna be looking at, just so you know, I've reached out to them and. Just sent them this language and said, would this work? Still waiting to hear back from them, but wanna make sure we don't get it adopted and they tell us not quite, so. Um, yeah, that's, that's what we've got for you, um, I've been answering questions.
I have a question on your last point, Steve, so we're not sure if this is gonna work for them, but we're gonna be voting on it tonight.
So my intention, I I I reached out to them bef- you know, a few weeks ago. In in asking, does this work? Hoping to hear back by today to tell you. Um, you could, it might, I I feel that it will work, because I've looked at their language pretty closely. Um, the, um, let's see. You you, but you are making a recommendation to the, to the county commissioners, um, there is a chance that if the, if the um. If Weaver Basin comes back to me and tells me it doesn't work, um, I mean, I'd be happy to bring it back to you, to to to. At the adjusted language, I'd be happy to bring that back to you, but um, yeah, just waiting to hear back from.
Nothing else, all entertain a motion to open the public hearing, motion, the motion, or we got a second? All those in favor going in public hearing?
Hi.
Hi. Now, in a public hearing, anybody wishing to speak on this proposed ordinance or this change? Seeing none, all entertain a motion to close public hearing, motion, motion, or we got a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, hi. Okay, now we can discuss it some more, we got the technicality side of it out. Unless there's no more discussion on it, then we can just call for a motion.
I I just kind of, I guess, a point, but I. Steve's point earlier that this is an incentive, but if we don't do this to force people to do it, they can't get that incentive, what's the incentive?
Construction, yeah, I know. New construction that doesn't apply for the anyways. I I agree, makes no sense that we were basing the program. Doesn't apply to new construction, because it should.
Well, that does, I do have a question.
Because it's, we have to change our code. So we, they are forced to change our code for all of new construction.
Uh, but to actually go in and get the money through the rebate program, it does not apply to new construction.
But you, yeah, you cannot get a rebate, but what they're trying to do is incentivize the counties to change their codes to force development to be more water-wise. And that way, the current residents can get the rebate, so.
Go back and.
So we don't have to, just to clarify, the three thousand square foot is not part of what we have to do. To get the rebate, the way I understand it.
True, it's just a a a planning practice, I I think it. Was, I know it was talked about a little bit when we were doing the general plan, wanted to implement that as part of smart growth, I. I think it might have been taken out, or a lot of it was taken out, but yeah.
I disagreed then, just.
So Steve, can a resident right now still qualify for this incentive without this being for them?
No, no, we were basing will, they they won't put our name on that list until they see that they've adopted the rules as they want us to.
And was it their idea to put three thousand square feet?
No, no, that was um, that was a Steve thing, so.
Well, Steve was a two thousand, we talked gender up and at the three. Your first proposal was two thousand.
You ever been to Arizona?
Up to four or five.
Yeah, the the Weaver Basin just says thirty-five percent of front and side. I believe, I I'd have to double check exactly, but there is a thirty-five percent, I mean, it's just thirty-five percent of the front and side yard, no more than thirty-five percent. And my understanding is they don't, they don't regulate the back.
And so I'm asking for more of a middle ground between Steve Land and Weaver Basin, I'm saying let's do thirty-five percent for the whole lot. Or three thousand as a maximum, so that, or as a, well. Not as a ma- I've got to get it right.
Think you just say thirty-five percent, right?
No, but I just want to make sure that someone who has like a very small amount of backyard is allowed to have it all in grass, someone who has like a twenty by forty backyard. Can have it all in grass if they'd like, um. So how do we state that?
You want to put it to the.
That's what we got, if they don't regulate the back. Because they're not, with this three thousand square foot, isn't regulated that?
Well, it is, that's regulating, that's.
That's total lot.
That's total lot.
Yeah, the way it says right now.
So do you want to put a minimum lot size? Because that's, that's what you're gonna have to.
Well, I I am okay with a a minimum square footage of turf grass. Or uh, or I guess, how do you state it? Because it's a minimum for one, is anyone following this?
Commissioner Wickard, I I suggest we say um three thousand square feet or thirty-five percent, whichever is greater.
Thank you, that's the word I'm looking for.
Greater or less?
Greater, greater.
Whichever one.
Greater, because.
You're limiting at thirty-five percent or the three thousand, so people can go up to. But they cannot, and they can go beyond three thousand, they at thirty-five percent.
So the only ones that will affect is the really big lots, right?
So then the bigger lots are really only gonna have thirty-five percent.
Mm-hmm. Which means what you were saying, the horses and everything else, so it should be.
Yeah, on a thirty-five percent, I mean, but you still could have on an acre lot. You could still have seven or eight thousand square feet of that. In, no, it'd be more than that, because quarter acre. So you're talking, they could have dang near. Fifteen thousand square feet of grass on that.
On the entire plot, front and back.
I mean, it's better than what we have now, right? Steve, did you mention what the Ogden Valley perspective was on this, the Ogden Valley? Do you want me to?
We don't care about the Ogden Valley.
It just.
I would like to hear it.
After that, Charlie.
Only if I agree.
Um, we went to Ogden Valley in work session a few weeks ago, and um. Across the board, they were very much opposed to this, and and they just didn't want Weaver Basin regulating. Um, things like water rights, and you know, if you if you only use so much water, you get rid of your water rights, and. Um, so there there could be an issue where, that's one of the reasons we reached out to Weaver Basin. Will they allow us to have this incentive if half the county doesn't do it and half the county does? We'll, we'll see what they say.
I I think that's the difference, the difference is Weaver Basin supplies water down here, Weaver Basin doesn't do much in the Ogden Valley.
I think their uh their biggest issue, um. Yeah, I think their biggest issue was that they they like the incentive program, they don't like the mandatory. Requirement, and I do believe that is Weaver Basin specific, the state has set up some rules on how to administer the funds. And then they allow the conservancy districts to administer the funds. But I'm not aware of other conservancy districts having these same kind of rules where all new development has to be X, Y, Z. Um, and some other conservancy districts are just, they just got the um benefit program, where if you flip your strip or you flip your yard, you get a little bit of money. There's also a, I, I I don't know. How valid this argument is, but there's a, there's, there's also a three acre minimum lot size in the Ogden Valley, although. Most of the lots that are being platted are in areas where lots are significantly smaller than that, but that came up as well.
Hey, Max, my thing. Any more discussion, or let's call for a motion. Even if it's to table it, just so that we can.
Well, I'm ready to make a motion.
Alright.
I don't know if anyone likes it, but I'm gonna make it. I'll make a motion that we approve. Item four point three Z T A twenty twenty three oh four. Um. A public hearing to consider county initiated ordinance amendment to implement water wise landscaping regulations that align with the Weber. Basin Water Conservancy District turf removal incentives. With two recommendations. One that um, in section one oh eight two, that's two dash five. Um, item F, item one, that the six inch angular rock is um. Altered to allow more options. And that in one oh eight, seven, twelve, item A. That it states. Um, instead of saying and no more than three thousand square feet of total lot area, it states and no. The greater of three thousand square feet or thirty five percent of total lot area.
And I got a second for that motion.
Why don't we clarify the real hawk?
I I, I was thinking how to do that.
Maybe instead of the six inch, go from uh, two, two inch plus.
But this is just, this doesn't play into effect. I thought we discussed in a or in a residential zone. This is all for.
It's commercial, but we still wanted some flexibility in commercial because it might be a heavy burden on the commercial and owners.
And I think the judge's proposal would be good, two inch plus would be good.
Yeah, I. Can I amend my motion? Okay, I amend my motion to state. Um, in section one oh eight, two, five, F, one, instead of six inch angular rock, minimum of two inch angular rock.
Plus.
Well, it's a minimum, so, yeah.
Okay, I got an amended motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Add a motion and a second. Any discussion, further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Commissioner Neville.
Aye.
Commissioner Wickern.
Aye.
Commissioner Faverell.
Aye.
Commissioner Andrea Oddie.
No.
Commissioner McCormick.
Aye.
Chair votes no as well, so that goes. Order two, that passes. Okay. Next item on the agenda, public comment for items not on today's agenda. Seeing none, we'll go on to item number six, remarks from the planning commission.
I just have a short one and I lost the paper, but. I'll follow that a a member of our state house uh, said we gotta get serious about affordable housing. And he had two recommendations, eight houses per acre. And they really a hawkish look at impact fees that aren't being used for what they're. For, and I thought, you know. It it's sort of like everything else. We gotta figure this thing out or somebody's gonna tell us what to do.
Yeah.
Anyway, I just thought I'd pass on it.
Commissioner Andrea Oddie. I got two things I I want to bring up. So this one, I kind of want the consensus from the planning commission to give staff a little bit of a direction. So. Two months ago, we had a, we had a meeting. Um, for a rezone and a public hearing with an incomplete application. And we had a lot of public here and there was a lot of unknowns because the application wasn't, wasn't complete. When me and and Commissioner Faverro had her chair vice chair meeting on Thursday. The same thing come up with this rezone we heard today on the Wilder Rezone. And and I, it really bothers me that we're scheduling public hearings and we want public input. When we have incomplete applications. I mean, the ordinance basically says. The application should be complete before it moves on, and I don't feel that we're doing any burden. On the applicant because it's their job to get us the information. So I I would like you guys' feelings or consensus on this same item. To give staff some direction of, you know, if it's not complete, I don't want to see it.
Before you do so, um, perhaps I can offer just a little bit. Um, I've been out of town for quite a bit of the last three weeks and didn't get the chance to. Steer um, any of the um, items going on the agenda tonight. So. Call that my fault. Uh, I'm still of the mind from uh, your last meeting where you said, let's not, or two months ago where you said, let's not have any. Incomplete applications. And so we're actually working on staff to make sure that everything that comes to you is complete. I just missed this one because I was out.
Geez, after all that work on the general plan, you think you get time off, Charlie? Come on.
I have almost depleted my uh, overtime, almost. It's been a year in the making.
Well, it's well deserved for you, Charlie, so.
I have a comment along the same lines, Chair. This is a list from Harrisville City. And it walks a developer through everything he's gotta do along the dates. I don't know if we have one of those. But it makes it so simple to weed out what Bren's talking about. It's if they know what they've gotta do. They'll do it, but the county's different, every city's different. And and when we're in the county, we should show them what the county wants. That way we're not scheduling those unorthodox meetings where. A hundred bad angry people come in and we're not prepared to answer many of their questions.
Yeah, and I am actually working right now with our I T department to get our application, online application portal adjusted. Um, some of our applications will not allow you to move forward to submit the application without mandatory information. And so I'll just make sure, we're trying to get this done. I T's really busy, so it might be a little bit in the making to get that. But for rezones, it's you, it it's been in the past relatively open. We want to make sure we get that locked down so that they can't even hit submit. And until they've got street regulating plan, park plan, um, information from uh, utility companies and so.
That's a good idea, Charlie. But do we have something like Judge showing from Harrisville?
It it is actually on the.
It it won't let them get through. They know that that's what to anticipate.
It's on the website. Uh, maybe we could make it a little more obvious. Um, but on the website, when you go to submit an application, you've got two o- two options that you could click on. One is submittal application requirements or application submitted requirements. The other one is submit an application. And so if they're eager and they're just going to submit the application, they're not looking at the application.
Yeah, you know, sometimes it feels like. The applicants don't meet the criteria they're supposed to meet, you know, in via the the website or wha- whatever. And they end up coming in and talking with somebody and they get a soft ear. And it seems like. It, you know, there's kind of a handholding that goes on, which is great, no problem, because, you know, I mean, everybody needs that. And so that's not a problem for me, but what it does seem to pose, and maybe I'm wrong. But it's, it seems to pose a potential to skip through some of the stuff and bring stuff to the. To a meeting, to a public hearing, and and it just gets stuff to a point where it shouldn't be. And it's because somebody's given a, you know, a little bit of of a of a sad story or something along those lines.
I will tell you this much, um, state code says if an applicant asks for a decision in writing. We have to give him a decision within forty five days. And so in some cases, you might get something on your agenda. We're gonna recommend denial because we haven't had enough time to get all the information. On the other side, if an applicant comes in and says, look, I think I just want to get in front of the planning commission. I'm pretty sure I could silver tongue this uh, my way through this. If it gets really persistent, in some cases, we might say, okay. But then normally what we'll do is we'll talk to the chair and vice chair in the chair vice chair meeting. Hey, this one's not done. They insisted being on the agenda and honestly, if you, if you push a little further over even uh, our heads. Though, those are the softest ears. Um, and so sometimes things get on the agenda because we're told to put them on. Um, you might still see them. My recommendation for the planning commission is stay stalwart and tell them, well, thanks for coming, but no thanks. Go finish your application.
I got about a fifty five minute comment.
Set my timer.
Uh, a a a couple of things.
He saved it all.
You know.
Ben has a rodeo.
You guys are using my time. You you know, and and I've always felt this way. J- Jed says that uh, fences make people better neighbors. Checklists make organizations more efficient. And I think that one of the things is is, you know, based on everything that goes in, phone calls, calling and that. The checklist would be a saving factor because. These guys coming in here are the customers of the county. Basically, they're our customer, they're coming in. And I think that we need to be more sensitive to that because. They 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 get here, they're not complete. They get tabled and go back. We got forty five people out here and they're blaming us.
And they won't come next time.
And they might not come next. That's exactly right. So I think that. It's sort of like everything else. A little bit of work up front might make things a lot easier later. The problem is, is when you start down that road, you gotta get over the hump. But it, I I just got a feeling that. You know, if we're, I won't call it more professional, I will just call it the one, two buckle my shoe type approach to this. Would benefit everybody. And and I get the fact that we have to hear them. And I don't have a problem with that because when it really gets there, they're screened by you guys, they're screened by. The chair and vice chair. And if we gotta do it, we can certainly do that. But I just think that there's a lot of things we can clean up to have a much better perception of what we do. And and the county in general and, you know, I've been at this a long time, but it's much better now than it was twenty years ago. Much better. And uh, so I think we're on the right track. I'd just like to speed it up a little.
Yeah, me too. Um, we'll get things moving along a little faster. Uh, I will tell you, um. I just lost my train of thought. I'm sorry. It's getting to that time of night.
Well, I got forty six minutes.
It's true. Hey, let's think about that a little bit more. Sorry, I'll, I'll bring it back up when I remember.
Thank you.
I remember. Thank you.
There you go.
That's, that, that was my statement. My statement was, thank you. I um, the more you guys. Allow this to sink in for us, the easier it is when we do have soft ears to say, well, look, we get you in front of the planning commission, but they're gonna tell you a pound sand. Until you've got this. And the more we hear it from you guys, the more firm we are with applicants and just easier.
We can be the bad guys because it's, you know, my whole thought and to echo what Wayne said, you know, it's, it's one thing to waste our time and staff's time. But to waste the public's time that has to take off and, you know, to make it to our meetings to, you know, to to. We want the public input, we want that comment. You know, we we want to have the proper, you know. We want to tell them what the story is, not get a, get a crazy, even though, you know, a lot layout doesn't mean nothing, but get this handed in our pre-meeting. It it just doesn't go over very well.
It complicates things.
Story in here, exactly. It just, it makes it all look more professional.
To to figure out the story in the meeting, but then to try and sort it out in a half an hour before the meeting, that that really don't work. So.
And I appreciate Commissioner uh, Andrea, Andrea Oddie, your uh, your statement about the customers that are here. Sometimes when the soft ears that are a- above my pay grade, want to get things on the agenda, it's, it's. It's nice for us to be able to say, hey, the planning commission isn't just concerned about the applicant that has paid for the application. They're concerned about those who are in the crowd waiting to to hear things. And uh, I think that public input is important.
So, the second thing I had is remind them kind of like it was in the winter time when they shut the heater off early.
Oh, thank you.
Leave the air conditioner on when we're in our meeting because it's getting kind of hot in here.
I was gonna say Commissioner Andrea Oddie uses a lot, has a lot of uh, property taxes. Can we use some of those?
We'll put an earmark on him. Yeah, I'll make sure I bring that up again. Yeah.
Yeah, it was, we finally got the heat turned on longer for us, but now we need the air left on. So, okay, any other remarks, commissioners? Charlie?
Well, if we're lucky, we'll have the uh, the A C turned back on by the time the snow flies.
That's what I figured. For Weaver State, Dennis.
I just wanted to make sure you guys knew that um, the updated general plan, updated with the Black Pine Updates. Um, has been approved. I don't know if Rick brought you up to dispute on that in your last meeting. Um, it was approved a few weeks ago, uh, as well as the Black Pine uh, development. That development agreement is not yet signed. But it is on its way to being signed here pretty soon. Um, the new uh, general, I'm calling it the new general plan from a year ago. Uh, the new general plan from a couple of weeks ago, um, will be on the website shortly. Primarily what the county commission did is just amended the future land use map that you guys already saw. Um, I found um, over the last year, a couple of. Areas of the plan that could have been less. I made a few mistakes. Let's just say that. Um, and so we wanted to make sure we got in and and just corrected some of the typos and stuff like that. Um, and then uh, made it more clear and obvious how we are expecting the uh, street. Uh, recommendations in the plan to go. Uh, we weren't super clear about right of way widths and and when we're gonna apply them or we're not gonna apply them. Uh, for example, right after the plan was adopted. County engineer came to my office and said, we're asking for a hundred foot right away on twenty five fifty. We've only been telling people eighty. And now we have to follow the rules of our plan because state code says if you're gonna do a public project, it has to follow your general plan. And so now we're out of compliance. And so we just wanted to make sure we add some softening language to say if it's a county initiated project. It could be whatever the county needs it to be for the 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 public at the time, because we're being stewards of the the public's money. If it's a uh, developer initiated project, they just need to follow us. Just so you guys know that, those were the tweaks that were amazing.
So there's no rules for the county?
There are always rules. It's just less, less strict.
Last legal's opinion, but it'll just say it depends, so.
Nope.
I got you.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Charlie. Liam? It depends. Okay, we'll adjourn to a work session, but I think let's take a five minute bathroom break. I drank too many bottles of water this afternoon. Then we'll, do you guys want to meet in here? Would you rather go meet in there around the table?
Steve gave me a request to see if we could stay in here, but you guys get to have, make that call.
Is it cooler over there? Might be, probably not, because there's more dang windows over there, though. Alright. Five minute bathroom break.
You're gonna get some palm leaves.
Hey, we good? So first item for work session is gonna be Alley Farms. It doesn't tell me who. Steve, or maybe it does on this updated.
Nope.
Yeah, so um, this, the the lot owner recently submitted a a rezone. As you know, with the, for the first step is to kind of come to work session. Um, no one in our office has, I don't think, been necessarily assigned to work on that project yet, so we've let the owner know that they'll just be presenting the project and. Kind of getting some feedback from me tonight. So uh, Phil, I believe his name is 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 here to present that.
Perfect, come on up.
As he's coming up.
Price of right.
Come on down.
Price of rice.
As he, as he's coming up to the microphone, I want to let you guys know. We did have a meeting with um, Phil, one of your colleagues or um, coworkers or whatever it is. Um, uh, about this project. One of the reasons why we felt this should come to work session, even before we were comfortable or had. You know, any kind of an in-depth review of it is primarily because we've got the uh, new general plan. We've got the street regulating plan for a form based area and both of them kind of overlap. The question is for the particular piece of property that we're looking at, uh, the big question that. We have for you guys, both the applicant as well as staff is, um, how flexible are we on the boundaries of that village? Um, are you comfortable with um, R one fifteen zoning instead of form based zoning? Um, if we're kind of on the edge of that village, uh, really it just kind of comes down to how closely you guys want to follow. Uh, the the planning maps. Um, so that's the, that's the setup and I'll, I'll let Phil take it away from there. Look it up on the screen. I'm gonna get it up on the screen for you. I don't know if it's in your packet.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Phil Holland, um. Five ninety K's Drive, K'sville, Utah. Uh, I'm the owner of the property. And glad to be here. I sit in a lot of planning commission meetings every month and this has been a delight to listen to you guys and I'm not just saying that. Uh, sometimes they're hard and you guys have been strict and good and had good dialogue. So I commend you for that. We actually uh, over a year and a half ago, got a preliminary approval on this property. We actually, uh, over a year and a half ago, got a preliminary approval on this property. You probably remember that. And unfortunately, at the time, it fit right in the section of. Well, we might change the general plan. So hold off. We decided to, to continue forward to get that preliminary approval. Um, and at the time, there wasn't a, a street regulating plan. The, the land use plan has drastically changed for the better, just in my humble opinion. I think the county has done an amazing job doing that. And so here we are a year and a half later, kind of as the dust has settled with the new general plan updates. With the regulating plan and we are providing this plan that is in front of you. And just pointing out a few things, and it was really good for me to be here for Wilder Estates. To hear some of that, that dialogue and some of the things that you brought up to him. You know, we feel like, uh, this is a, a, a unique parcel that is a little bit pioneering in a, in a lot of ways. Um, first thing I'd point out is we have stubbed roadways, um, and access points to the north, to the south, to the west. UDOT is likely only going to allow us that one access. Another thing I'd point out is you can't really see it, but at the south. You see the stub row that goes to the south, which would be the bottom of the page. This area is in desperate need and has been of utilities. And when we were doing our preliminary plan, we met with the, the county commissioners. Just in terms of, eh, what's available here. And that's about when they said, hey, you might want to hold tight. We're redoing the general plan. Where that stub road goes to the south, we actually have land there dedicated for a sewer lift station that's regional. So something that our, our development would bring to that area is that. We also have an easement through Hooper irrigation or Hooper irrigation rather has an easement through this twenty six acres. Which in our plan, we show as a, you know, was brought up earlier as a trail. And we actually like that ability for those pedestrians or whatever else, wildlife. To, uh, travel through there. Um, we meet the general plan. Um, it was brought up a little bit that this is in an area that, you know, we've got to really start to define this town center area. Um, there's talk of, you know, could this be townhomes? Could this be commercial use? Could this be, what is it exactly? Uh, and so we've put our best foot forward and said, hey, we're willing to pioneer. We're willing to do some of those major utilities, provide the land for them. Um, and we love the plan that we have in front of you. Some of the things you already talked about today. Uh, we've implemented in this plan with feedback from county staff. And so, um, we're excited about it. Uh, there's, we still have a little bit of ways to go. Be a rezone, but I think that this is actually a very beneficial thing that I can sit in front of you in a work session. So I'm open to questions. I'm open, open to thoughts. Um, let me know what you think.
Sure, Mr. Holland, I just have an easy question. What's the south on this? Am I not seeing it on here?
Nine hundred south, just below it. So it's right across from Cherokee. Yep. Basically where we were talking about it like kitty corner to.
If the, if this extended all the way up to forty seven hundred, they would touch if they were middle of forty seven. Great, thank you.
And, and on that note, it's likely that, I don't know if UDOT wants nine hundred south to be lit. Uh, as far as a, um, arterial intersection. But we feel like we're just to the north of that where the one access is probably.
I think your access isn't good. I mean, really geographically to the, like, we spoke earlier, you're, you're far enough away from the canal. You got good and, and really, I mean, any closer to nine hundred, I think would be an issue. So I, I personally like. I like this layout. I don't see a.
What are, what are the lot sizes here? They range in, we've got some that are, um, over half acre. And then some that are a little less than quarter acre, kind of in that island in the middle there.
And that brings up, so, so if you go to this property boundary and go across the street. Actually just across the street, then we've got Cherokee, which this is the village area that we, that is in the general plan. So these, this definitely could be higher density here.
I like it that it's not.
Well, personal.
Yeah, I, but. And it is, I, I think it's.
Well, but the only question that that brings to mind is what does that do for that area as, as we progress forward with this having been a, 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 uh. Higher density designated area. And, and it's not that this is a bad thing. It's just that. Do we want to maintain? An area size and, and transfer. I mean, you can do a reverse rights transfer from this subdivision because of where it's located. So do you do a reverse transfer to another village area and make another village area larger?
Yep. We're, I'm working on it right now.
I guess more to the new form base. Plan that we just adopted there.
I'm gonna do both.
You're the man.
Really weird. It's flashing. Look really fast. Okay, right here. Now over here. Let me, let me stop sharing for a second. Try again. Hang on.
Took a snapshot in your, in your head.
Now, let's see if I could. I guess I can't share my entire screen.
One question, is there another, I, I didn't see two ingress and egress. Am I right or wrong?
So. Um, I think it's either chapter eighteen or chapter nineteen of the, the fire code. Um, there is a, a concept or a, a paragraph in there that talks about the thirty unit. Uh, but there's also other mitigating factors that you can look at. And one of those is future development and stub roads out. Uh, there is, you know. Dirt roads, for lack of a better term.
Emergency egress.
Surround it. Um, and so that's something definitely we would look at. South.
An existing dirt road, but the prob, they would just have to get an access agreement.
And there is one on the north as well.
I mean, uh, I'll, I'll walk you through what I'm, I'm seeing here.
On the north of the canal, on top of the canal.
So first off, let's actually, sorry, give me a second. Right around with this, just a sec. And then down just a little bit. So the red boundaries are just gonna got up of a general eyeballing. So you could see that not exactly right, but close. Uh, I'm gonna turn that down just a little bit so we can see some of this other information. Um, let's just look at the future land use map of the general plan. So you'd kind of see what we're looking at here. Um, frontage being mixed use commercial, uh, with a, a band of mixed residential. Uh, and when we see a mixed residential, if you recall, it's really just market, whatever the market wants to provide here. Um, and then it's large lot residential, which is, or sorry agriculture, which is the one acre. Um, back in this area here, the big swath here, it's not intended to be literally that wide, but that's the, uh, canal. That we were talking about comes down and eventually makes its way down to twelfth street. Um, big park, uh, of some sort in here. Nine hundred is the, um, areas. Uh, Main Street, forty seven is the areas, for lack of a different word, uh, Center Street. Uh, so just an understanding, this is, this is downtown. Um, one thing that we don't know, that we have received guidance from the county commission that they want to see this village grow from the center outward. And here's the center, but this is kind of an alternative center. So somewhere in here is, is where that center is. Um, once we get out to this area here, we don't even know if, if you guys were to recommend approval of a rezone to the R one fifteen zone. Uh, uh, of the property, of the entire property, we don't even know if the commission, or excuse me. If you guys were to ask the applicant to go to the street regulating plan under the form-based zone, we don't even know the, uh, county commission is going to accept that. They may say, you know, you're just a little too far off from that center of town for us to, to ask for that. Now, where this is literally right here from the center of town, I don't know that they will. But there is some ambiguity there for us to, eh, explore. Um, if we did go with. The, uh, form-based code and the street regulating plan, that's what it, that's what this looks like here. So you got mixed use commercial going up to about here. Um, you've got multifamily along forty seven hundred and into the property till about that, the edge of that jog. Beyond that, you could have, um, small lot residential. Uh, smaller residential is three thousand square foot minimum, and you could get up to four lots on that, but you can also do single family if you wanted to. And then beyond that, you've got eight thousand square foot. And then on the outside of this, it's back up to an acre that we're in rural residential. So, um, in, in all versions, we have this canal and the other side of the canal is planned on being one acre lots. Now here's, here's the, the question for you guys is how close to this do you guys want to follow? Does this make sense to say, you know what? Um, you're close enough to an area where we're looking at single family residential. We'll get you the R one fifteen zone across the board. You guys do what you want to do. Um, you know, as long as your streets work for us, as long as your pathways work for us, we're good, um, with you using that tool. Or would you rather say, boy, that, that frontage, um, got an opportunity for multifamily and some commercial? And we don't want to rob the future of having that, um, opportunity. Now, if we say don't rob the future, then we're technically robbing the landowner of the opportunity to use something right now. Because the market will tell you that there is no market for commercial right here. You don't have enough rooftops. Maybe if we wanted high density apartments, but again, I think back to, uh, Commissioner Edwards' point. Uh, maybe we're not quite ready for higher density apartments right here and the applicant isn't asking. So a few things to think about. If you were to look at the average, uh, given the. Intensity of what the street regulating plan is calling for in a form-based area. Uh, it probably would work out to be kind of fifteen thousand square feet across the board. Um, if we're doing form-based with this side being one acre lots and this side being mixed use commercial and, and higher density. When we say high density residential, we're not talking about Ogden City residential. We're talking about whatever you could fit inside of a, a forty foot. Some, some thoughts for you guys.
Yes, sir. I think if we don't put some type of commercial along forty seven hundred. They want to put commercial on the other side of the road to have. Roomful of people or dissatisfaction.
We've been told by the other side of the road that's supposed to stay open, public, park, open ground.
Till we see whatever.
I, I agree.
Chair, I, I think there's a lot of validity to, um, Jeb's comment, but. We can't get commercial out there until we have rooftops. And so where that's just a small part of commercial, maybe we push a little further south with the commercial. And where we've got an opportunity to put rooftops in, we put the rooftops in. I, I, it is going to be a difficult balance because there just isn't enough density for anyone to go out there yet. And the roads can't handle the density yet for anything too heavy. I personally would love to see in that corner, a big apartment, but. What was that?
They just chip and seal.
So, so it is, it's kind of the infrastructure's not quite ready and we need the, the rooftops to get the businesses to get. More justification for the roads. It's chicken and egg all over.
It's true, but I don't, I, 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 I agree with Commissioner McCormick to the point where, okay. It's got to be somewhere. Eventually it's going to be somewhere. So I, I hate to see the area size shrink. You know, uh, and, and we say, okay, well, we're going to just eliminate that from this village area. And that's why I was kind of making the suggestion earlier that, okay, let's look at this from a different perspective. If we want to see those businesses at some point in time, which they will be there eventually, I may not be there to see them, but they'll be there eventually. They'll be somewhere eventually out there because, because the rooftops will be there to demand it, to your point. So you can't eliminate all of the area. So I don't have a problem with this subdivision like this. But where do you, what do you, what, what do you do with that area that it was, that it was looked at? Uh, for in the general plan. Where do you, where do you put that? Where do you take that section and? You know, and put it so that there is room for commercial or something somewhere else, um, later on.
Yeah, we just add that in.
Yes.
Yeah, that, yeah, that is part of forum base. And so that's where they're, they're right on the edge of forum base. Their edge, they're on the edge of that village. Uh, so it's kind of a, a challenging spot. I mean, they're in a better spot than they were a year ago, which was one acre minimum. Um, eh, what you could see here, as we sat down with the applicant, we thought, gosh, we don't want to pigeonhole this area into. Um, eh, a million dollar homes on, on, uh, you know, moderate sized lots. Where that home will never be torn down because of the just value of it. Um, and you're never going to get a business out of that. Uh, and so in discussing that, we thought, well, why don't we focus on putting a detention basin that won't be developed right here where commercial could go? And then the future, when commercial, when it's ripe for commercial to go, someone could potentially purchase that detention basin. Um, underground or retrofit or whatever it is, you know, do their engineering magic for that drainage and build on top of it. Uh, so we thought that was a pretty good compromise. Um, next step, leaving that vacant. Um, next step was coming up in here in the, uh, the multifamily. We thought, well, gosh, why don't you, why don't you hang on to these lots here? Don't build on them, maybe, uh, uh, allow for the market to decide. You know, what size can go there? Um, or maybe combine these two lots together and build the homes way over here. So that these landowners have the opportunity to sell their side yards, um, to a developer who does want to put some multifamily in there. There was some concerns in the meeting that we were discussing that because this is the entrance to their subdivision. So there's obviously going to be a model. Right there. It's going to be their, their advertisement for what their product is in size. So we may have, um. Uh, you know, a, a good solution, just leaving this open and at some point in time, maybe those two really nice homes on the corner, which is going to be. I would guess the lower end of the nicer homes, but the, the model that they can show people that, that they could do. Um, that one day become cafes, you know, or a, a coffee shop or something like that. So there are options. Um, I'm just aware that when it comes to, uh, single family residences. Uh, there was a study that was done, uh, picked this information up in, in college. So don't make me cite it, but there was a study that was done, uh. Evaluating single family dwellings worldwide and the average lifespan is somewhere between one hundred and three hundred years. Uh, is the age of a single family dwelling. So you can just imagine how long it takes to tear buildings down. Uh, when it comes to commercial, it's about thirty five years. Uh, and that's how quickly commercial flips, uh, returns over. So.
And I think that that's a good point because I think we got to be careful on how we do this and we're going to wind up like Ogden. Where's a grocery store in this town? So we're talking about rooftops and, and we need them. But at the same time, where's this? If we fill it up with rooftops, then where's the store? Remember we're trying to cut down. Car traffic. Leave the car at home, walk to the store. I mean, eh, to, to me, I, I, I know we need the, the, the tops. But at the same time, if we want to capture the overall goal of our general plan. We're going to have to bite the bullet somewhere and decide maybe where that place needs to be. Because in, in this town, I mean, you get in this here, one of these nice apartments. Where are you going to go? The grocery store? Got to get in your car and go down here for me. And so I'm thinking that. It's a chicken and the egg in my mind, but at the same time, I think that if we're going to be successful. These commercial entities need to be there. We just need to decide where they are for sure.
I think to Wayne's point, I mean, commercial is going to grow where the traffic is. Your commercial is going to start down on the, on. Eh, well, it's going to be on twelfth street before it ever pushes to this point. But I had Charlie back this out because I just wanted to bring up the point. I mean, you know, I, I look at the development they're proposing and I. And I know we created this form-based zone, but we knew what existing development was in this form-based zone. When you look over here a little bit closer to forty four hundred west or, you know, the, the part of that that's already platted in single family residential homes. And we've got a lot of that orange where there is an existing subdivision with single family homes in that orange zone. Or in that orange multifamily area. When I look at the, the proposal that, that Phil's brought to us tonight. And I look at the mix of what he's. Phil's brought to us tonight, and I look at the mix of what he's brought in there. Yeah, it's a little bit different. I mean, we've got some smaller lots back here and, you know, maybe a few of them larger lots, but really, when you look at that overall. Layout of that subdivision and, you know, yeah, across the canal was supposed to be a little bit bigger. I think it fits the area. And I think it'll be a, a nice development, you know, I, I agree with you, Wayne. I mean, it's. Nine hundred is going to be a commercial hub at some point, right? There, there, there's going to be stores on all those, and whether it's a. You know, a, a gas station or what kind of store is going to be there as the growth comes, it's going to come, but when you, when we're talking a larger store like a grocery store or something like that. I think you're going to see it happen more on a, on a more developed. Or or a more highly traveled traffic type corridor, which, you know, twelve street and and forty seven hundred is going to be that. That area, and I think we already have that in a commercial zone. And and being that it's already zoned that way, we're going to attract businesses there a lot quicker than having to come in and go through this rezone proposal. So I mean, I, I think when you look at the neighboring properties, I think this fits well. Um, I, I do like it. Just my thoughts.
Well, man, chair. I think it fits Weaver, Wes Weaver told me, I think he's being more than. But. Where this is commercial down here and. Maybe move that, maybe put some. Give him more density. Cause I know it's the line up. Between seven and a million and a half, right there, Ross from what may or may. To park it something. But if that comes back and that got developed into how. It's not going to be fair to those homes either.
I never got much about you. Uncle Jed, your, or Commissioner Uncle Jed. I like the idea of putting some density along that zone, so then at least if we do. I think that's a really, a really good point, but if I, and having that density right across. Very avid to more people can benefit.
For the rain off that one accent. Separate your house.
Yeah, um.
It does.
Save them.
But then you still have to sell those lots that are just beyond. That, that gives your big house to put inside.
Oh, sorry.
That's, I agree with that, like. I mean, I see Charlie's probably bigger basin. And it'd be very valid, but I'll bet that basin's less than a half acre.
Oh, yeah, I, I agree. We'd be looking at small shops that front that street.
Well, we, but you can fix that by giving more units and multi housing, and I'm telling you, multi housing right there. You sell out fifteen minutes.
So maybe a town.
There's nothing out there that's closed.
Well, then I think that development would meet Wayne's um point earlier, right? That we need to look at more affordable housing. And then this whole development would hit basically every checkbox, right? I don't know, it's not affordable.
Affordable.
Those dirt roads.
Not affordable housing.
Twenty foot. And you can't turn one of those trucks from the fire department on that. So you might have to make. On one of your lots, you might have to shave one of those off. So that if there is a fire, the fire unit can come down there and turn in, and then that would be leaving. You, you'd have to have some. You'd have road based after your standards. Also, somehow you'd have to do a homeowner association fee to take care of that road just in case of a fire.
And they'd have to have an access agreement from Knutson's to even do it because it's on Knutson's property.
Yeah, but Knutson's probably play ball.
I'm sure.
They're not going to live for him.
No, I'm sure they'd play ball with it.
Town home, so it would lend itself to single family.
The whole front. And then put the.
Then it kind of feathers out.
Then you got that between there and your. Between eight hundred and eighty five.
And if we go in that direction, what we could do uh in the future, someone's going to come in and ask to amend the forum based street regulating plan, and we could just clip. That red right there. And then this is commercial here, and there's multifam just along that frontage. Maybe we doesn't have to go deep in. Is that what we're, we're agreeing to?
The more units he gets out. There you can make that really parking.
Okay, now.
They're, they're very solid.
From the rear.
That max out of forty seven hundred, a nice big fence to separate it.
So next question, and Phil, did you have anything you wanted to mention before? What are the next question? No. Next question is uh regarding density. Um, and I don't remember, Phil, if you did um total acreage divided by fifteen thousand square feet, but. What do we, what we're looking at is not more than total acreage divided by fifteen thousand square feet. If we were to give townhomes, are we saying make bigger lots somewhere else in your subdivision, or are we saying just free townhomes? You're good.
Well, it would fall under a smaller, I mean, really, it'd fall under the, the other part of the ordinance, which would be more like an, you'd have kind of like an R one ten zone or a, a smaller zone, and then you would. But go kind of multi zoned, I guess, is what we do.
I'd suggest we do R three, which allows for the multi, uh, R two is just duplex, so R three, they can get multifam in there. Um, I can't remember what the max density is, but it's probably limited by height and area.
Sixteen per acre.
Yeah. In the R three zone, and and I'm going to ask this for Phil, hopefully it's okay, Phil, that I do. In the R three zone, single family is still allowed. And I know in talking to Phil's colleague, um, they, they want to stay a single family. Uh, development, is that still the case, or would you be comfortable doing some townhomes along forty seven hundred?
Yeah, I, I do both of those segments, single family, town.
You do, you, you're okay.
Commercial, yeah, I do it all.
Okay, and and are you okay with doing that in this particular? Development, okay, ignore what I asked.
How many times do you come before one of these and they're asking you to make it more dense? Yeah, and I've got a twenty one year career, which isn't a lot, but. Yeah, I mean, lately, it's kind of goes back to what you mentioned earlier, the state needs to do this. And I think you guys are doing the right thing. And usually it is a battle.
Well, within Weber County, we're the unpopular place to live right now because of what we're doing.
Yeah.
Everybody's going the other way. They don't want the density. But I, you know, don't want to change your mind because you pres, you presented something here that's, that that does fit the area the way the area is now. I, my disagreement with it is I hate to lose that area where it's designated within the general plan. Because of that density, I think it's important to keep those areas. Within the general plan, those areas specifically. Either that, or we doing in lieu of, if you, if you want to stick with what you're doing here, then we take that area and we move it to another, to another one of our. Form base areas so that there can be more area there. Yeah, I don't want to lose those areas. I, I don't think that's the right thing for us to do.
I agree.
Yeah. Makes sense.
Uh, we were harder on.
And if we get a park across the street, he can come back and tear those down.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. But and keep in mind, across the street, let's just say the county never allows a rezone to happen. That, that landowner still has the right to build one dwelling at every acre, and that landowner may at some point be frustrated and just do it. Um, which I think is one of the worst things that can happen on that property. Um, and so. Whatever we could do to help the landowner across the street.
Say that again, Charlie.
So.
We're at on that.
The county pushed pause on their requested rezone, and their requested rezone, just as a reminder, was for commercial up in the front. And about five acres of open space in the back, one of those acres would immediately become a park. Uh, a, a park district parcel, the other four acres, the landowner could continue to use until they decide to flip the rest of the property. For another higher density use, uh, which in that case, this would probably turn into townhomes, there'd be a five acre park. Or five acre park here, excuse me, and then um some commercial here. However, that's on pause right now because the county commission, the landowner owes the county some money. And the county commission said, we'll start talking about these other legislative decisions once you've settled your debts.
So we're not talking about a nineteen acre.
We started talking about it, it got scaled back by the landowner after uh the planning commission tabled them the first time. To a five acre, open space, one acre park. The rest of that. Four acres would go to the park district, it's just going to be after he's flipped his uh agricultural land use up here. And so you're right, nineteen, nineteen acres is no longer on the table fro, from the landowner. However, you could see from what we have here that we adopted even after the planning commission looked at that landowner's um proposal. Um, the, the street regulating plan suggests uh, uh, about a twenty acre park here. And so what this means for us is we need to find ways to work with that landowner. Or other developers who can work with that landowner to help us get that park. That nineteen acres secured, so there, nothing is set in stone. But we don't want to focus so hard on the nineteen acres of green space that we forget that the landowner currently has at least twenty development rights. One acre lots on that property, and if we make things too hard for that landowner to do what he wants to do. The easy answer for him to get money is to flip it for one acre lot, one uh, twenty one acre lots in a subdivision, which. Then you got townhomes and you got one acre lots across the street, and you get the flip issue. Uh, so we just want to make sure we're, we're open to all opportunities, I guess.
Well, how did it get nineteen acres in the first place? Didn't he give up something to get that?
That would have been original, the original proposal, it wa, it was going to be commercial for nineteen acres of, of green space, including uh park area. Um, and uh. He, he kind of backed away from that uh after he got a little bit of pushback from.
Did we give him something for that?
It, it would have been a rezone to commercial, the front, the front of the property would have been rezone to commercial. So. Anyway, we'll, we'll see what happens in the future. We hope this becomes park area, um, and then we can steal Phil's money and build a park across the street. For his uh applicants and those, or, or his uh buyers, yeah. Okay, I think we have enough information on us, Phil, you have any other questions?
Well, I was just going to ask, and this could happen just in future dialogue for us, but. I mean, my, my applications for an R one sixteen, do we stop and, and adjust? And come back to you? Is that what I'm hearing?
Kind of sounds like the best idea, which I think R one fifteen can still fly um with like R three uh, uh, across that frontage. Um, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Or? Yeah. Yeah, or if the planning commission would like to see a little more in there, you could do um R three, you could do R two, and then R one. Ten, R one twelve, R one fifteen, whatever you guys feel is comfortable. Okay.
I think, look at the layout, because you, to keep the density, you might have to do that, you know, if he wants to keep some of them smaller lots, we might have to have some R one ten. And then go into the R fifteen, because now you're going to break it up by acres, and when we're looking at it, fifteen thousand, ten thousand, you know what I mean? Look at the way it fits best, and, and like I said, if it's multi, i- if the rezone some RE fifteen, some R one ten and some, you know. Mm hmm, make it fit what you, you know, what you want to put in there, or you could leave it the way it is, and I like it.
Some, some smaller lots for my friend Wayne here, he's getting ready to sell his big. And he's ready to move into something smaller, and I think, I think that something smaller, one level in that area would work really well, actually, but that's.
Okay, so I'll work with Phil, we'll look to get the R three on the front, R one fifteen um behind that. I'm thinking, I'm just going to outline the area, I'm thinking right about there for uh the uh R three, does that sound okay, Phil, to you? Yeah, so maybe from the forty seven hundred to your first street, and then you could build townhomes that are rear loaded here. Um, and then everything else, um, R one fifteen, that gives you an automatic extra amount of density. Um, and then you can rearrange this here. And then uh access uh e- either on this street or finding a way to get across this farm field, whatever it is to get out. Actually, I think there is a road that runs along the, the, the canal right there, maybe there's a way to get emergency egress there. And you guys are okay with approving this as long as the at least one emergency egress exists.
The only thing on that second egress is if it's a twenty foot road. They can't turn those trucks on twenty foot unless he makes adjustments in his lungs.
Okay, okay, perfect.
But you're coming into a sixty foot. Road. Well, I guess not sixty, but thirty six foot.
Well, no, I'm talking about into the, in the back of the sub.
Yeah, love to make sure the corner, uh, the radiuses are, are. But your district.
The challenge with the canal is, is that's probably not structural pipe, it was probably cheap pipe at the time, and it's not going to support the weight of a fire truck.
It might be seconds.
It could be.
Well, so we are asking the applicant for uh that pathway, uh, that's a really important pathway, so maybe the pathway is built to a, a decent standard that can. Support vehicles in an emergency egress situation, which actually maybe that's ten foot wide pathway, it, it may be just fine to do.
Okay, cool. Thank you very much, sir.
Thanks to you.
Next item is the Halcyon open space rezone. Bill. You've been waiting all night to get up and talk to us. We haven't seen you for a while. It's kind of nice to.
Kind of nice to not see me.
No, it's nice to have you in front of us.
Right, that's all right.
You have one minute.
I'm just kidding. Uh, or less, um. So I, I think.
Yeah, well, I got one question on this one.
This is an interesting one. Um, this was uh the ten acres of approved open space that were part of the original Halcyon Estates. Subdivision, and they came back to us, they approached staff saying, you know, having a ten acre farm in and amongst all the rest of these subdivisions going in. Is maybe not the highest and best use of the property, so. Uh, let's see if the planning commission and or the county commissioners would be interested in rezoning a property and. And allowing us to develop this out in this similar pattern to what other. Developments in the area are, are seeing. Um, so we've been in conversation with them, staff has been with the developers and, and uh the engineers. Are working on this and and several other developments in the area, and so they put together an overall roads plan, and that's what you have in front of you. You can see that they've provided for some in interconnectivity, is that the word of the day, Charlie? Interior connectivity is to make sure that uh the, the road layout is what we hope it is and what we, where we need it to be. Oh, I'm sorry, this is the, the lighter colored. Square.
No, that's Bill.
Correct. That's what we're discussing right now. It's the house, it's the Halcyon two point O.
Oh, okay, so all the green.
Correct, yes, yes. Okay. So. That's um. That's pretty much it. Charlie, you have anything you want to add to that? We do.
I got a first question.
Thank you, Tyler's here.
Has the street trees been planted in the first phase?
I'm, I'm not going to comment on that, I don't.
It's going to be a sticking point till it's done, I'm not going to.
So we do have a representative here from the developer, but do you have any questions for me before I turn it over to him?
I mean, the, and my sticking point for the street trees is that was a condition of getting the zoning that it had at the time, or, you know, to get the density, and it's not in. So. And on top of that, you know, the, my opinion on this, I, I agree, it infill works. But what does the community gain from this? Because when, when this was the ordinance and, and they met the ordinance at the time, and the open space was to get the density.
So I know that the developer has been in communication with the Parks District about that exact question, so I'll let him address those. Um, concerns and whatever plans they may have worked out together. Um, but uh, I, I know that those conversations have been going on, so. Um, a- again, the Parks District may not be interested in a, a, a ten acre piece of. Farmland in the middle of.
Oh, I'm not saying the parks needs it because the parks have got a park right across the street. I, I agree to the point that development fits here, and it should be here. But I want to know what the community is going to get back as the open space benefit for giving up. The open space that it was.
And I'll defer, I'll defer.
Basically entitled to in the beginning.
Any other questions for me before I turn it over?
Maybe.
Thank you. Don't, don't go far.
I don't have a copy.
I don't have a car. Since I just got this this morning in my email. Um, yeah, so I don't know if you need my name, Tyler Branchley, um seventeen eighteen to Georgia. I live in this subdivision. Um. Okay, what does the community get? Well, one is all the interconnectivity of the roads through uh Leon Salmy and the other uh subdivisions. We are in talks with the county or with the Parks and Rec. Um, and we have agreed to uh not only the. Fees that you guys are charging to the other subdivisions, but a hundred and fifty percent above that. So they're getting in lieu of which is paid for through water shares, because we have the water shares that the actual park needs. So that's how they've approved it. Now to to. Can I can I address the trees briefly from? From a historical standpoint.
Hey, at the beginning, I was against them too, but.
No, no, I we we have never been against them. Let me just make that very clear. We worked with Steve. And our understanding and explanation in multiple meetings throughout the years that we've done this, because originally this was gonna be a waterski community. Was to get the density, we need to do the trees. And they said, look, you need to escrow the funds for the trees. We're not gonna ask you to put them in. Because. There's no houses. We can't just unilaterally go in and say, this is where your driveway is gonna be, and we're gonna start putting trees in. We've uh acknowledged the trees. We have given every homeowner the information to go and get the trees and to. Get reimbursed from the funds that were established in the county. So when we discussed this originally, the county just said, escrow the money. And make sure they're aware of it. That's what we did. There was never an agreement by us, at least not. At least that we agreed to, that we were going to go and mandate that they put trees in. We were going to provide the funds. And the information for them to do it. But as a developer, we were never going to go and actually put the trees in. That was the understanding that we had through the planning commission. I have zero concerns about going and digging up somebody's yard and putting trees in there. If you guys want that to happen.
Didn't we approve a landscape plan associated with this?
Uh, the phase one?
Yes, the the well, phase one or two, whichever the existing built part is. I remember seeing a landscaping plan.
Yeah, there was one as part of the P R U D.
Yeah, and there's there's requirements, but there's never put a tree here because we didn't have.
So many trees, so many fee.
I just don't want to have an argument that we're not willing to go and put trees in. We've always been willing to put trees in. If that's what you want, we're willing to say, take the funds from the trees and put it in the parks over across the street. We we're open to whatever.
Do that with escrow funds is only well, our legal left, but escrow's gotta go back to what it was intended for and.
Well, they're trees. They're just going in a different location, so.
It's based on, it was based on your original.
No, no, I understand. And I also.
A point that I brought up since this originally come back, even before that, it's been a long time. So I, I mean, let's get them done. So that's off the table.
Okay, so I guess the question is. What is what does that look like to you guys? Like, are we gonna just go and say? Here's a notice, we're putting trees in on this day, and you guys need to run your guys' drip line irrigations to your zero escaped frontage.
I don't think that's up for us to say that. I mean, it's the developer's commitment to do. It's gotta be done. And once it's in, then it's in, right, Charlie?
Yeah, I'd hate for him to go plant trees that are gonna die because there's no irrigation. This is actually one of the things that we are now trying to wrap our heads around now that we know we want trees. That the commission wants trees in these park strips. It's how do we keep them surviving, especially through the construction period? Okay.
That was my big thing originally too. I don't like them in the park strip, but.
Well, and we had even discussed, we'd even discussed saying, you guys put the trees wherever you want, you know, but. That's kind of up to you guys. But we don't have a problem putting the trees in. We've just kind of been in a limbo of. What do you guys want us to do?
The subdivision completion. The commitments of the original approval. For the area.
Yeah, so the our our standard subdivision completion agreement, and I don't know if the uh the P R U D followed the same standard. Um, it's just an agreement between the developer and the county. And so if planning commission is comfortable with the county. Saying, hey, we're gonna take two hundred fifty thousand or a hundred fifty thousand, whatever however much you have in your escrow. Uh, and and use that for something else, as long as the person who submitted that money for escrow is okay with that. And we've got that in writing. We could change that agreement and make it happen.
And that that's probably a question for legal, but yeah, I mean, we're we're willing to do whatever. We want it to be for the benefit of the community. Not just to check a box. And that's what we've always wanted to do is. Let's make this better. Um, let's not just check boxes for the sake of checking boxes.
But it was a condition that you got the zoning because of those boxes.
Which, yeah, and I and I don't want to argue with the the fact that the explanation to us, and I could probably go back and find the actual agreement. Was escrow the funds and allow the homeowners to put them in. You guys, we were told that was the extent of us. So.
Chair, is there a if I ask a question that doesn't have to have trees?
No, because I think Steve's gonna clarify.
Yeah, I don't, um. It's. It's a pretty standard requirement for developers to escrow for or provide a financial guarantee for any improvements that they don't install before the plat record.
No different than a sewer line or a water line. It just once it goes in, then they get reimbursed for it, right?
Yeah.
It's on the developer to install it, just like a sidewalk and everything else. Sidewalk's the same thing. You don't know where a driveway is gonna go, so the sidewalks typically don't go in. Lots and the home's done, and that's one of the last things. Sidewalk goes in, trees go in and stuff.
Yep, the development agreement says if you basically, if you want your money back, you'll install the trees, like you said you were going to, to get the density that you're going to get. So. To say that we don't expect the trees to be installed, I don't think that's accurate, but. Uh, you we're not going to force you to install the trees. We're just going to hold on to the money if you don't.
And.
That's why, like, we're not arguing.
We're gonna look at future development because they didn't finish the, they didn't meet the commitments of the first phase before we look at.
I would say that we met the commitments of escrowing funds.
Yeah, the funds are in there, but still it's.
But I mean, Steve just told you, like, it wasn't, it was like, we're not gonna force you to do it. And that was our explanation. And that's what all I'm saying is we're operating from an explanation of. Escrow the funds and allow the homeowners to do it if they choose. If they don't, the money just sits there. And so we understand that's what our understanding was. But I don't want to, what's your question unrelated to trees?
Okay, I'm just looking at the road connectivity in this area. We've got a lot of these bulb outs and streets that aren't connecting. You guys can. Help me more understand why we have this in this area. So. Like seventeen twenty five south is not going through, and I'm just concerned we've got a huge, we've got between sixteen hundred and eighteen hundred. Without any streets going through to other developments. So we've kind of isolated that area. Am I missing something? We have a little walking path, but nothing for cars.
That was in the decision that you just made today.
Yes.
The.
Prove this way.
This one, yes. Well, I'm not worried about this one going down, because we've got plenty. I'm worried about it going seventeen twenty. I'm I'm worried about which way is north on this.
Uh, the bottom.
North.
Or I'm sorry, the top.
So standard, yeah, so east and west seventeen twenty five. If you're going east.
Only thing we're looking.
Yeah, I I mean, our biggest concern.
No, no, no. Oh, this is what I keep getting lost on what we're doing. Okay. Okay, so instead of the path. Possibly a road through right there.
So, yeah, and I can address that and the fact that that first subdivision is uh that first phase of the subdivision, there are homeowners that own. That property. You guys are have more than the ability to legally go after and and do eminent domain and try to go through that. But we have no power whatsoever to extend that road.
So the cul- the cul-de-sac doesn't extend to the property line?
Not go to the property line. Both both property owners on both sides own.
Oh, okay, in in the picture.
Yeah, it's hard to see on this, but so you guys would then, that would be the county's responsibility at that point.
Then.
Planning commissioners, you can require that pathway to be a stub. And that makes it easier for the county to go in and acquire, but through whether it's eminent domain or or negotiation otherwise.
That was their, this was part of their. So the in the development, they didn't push it through.
Oh. It's fine with a pathway as well. And the reason why we're saying we're comfortable with it as it is is because we're more worried about the pedestrian connectivity than the vehicle connectivity here. Um, everybody has provided a block pattern that is six hundred sixty feet or less per block leg. And so that doesn't seem to be an issue.
Well, but where are we gonna get connection from Hacienda Estates to Hacienda?
Yep, so that's that that was the decision that was made a little bit earlier today. Uh, where we told smart fields that we're comfortable changing their street layout. Because they were showing seventeen hundred, well, the original planning commission approval was seventeen hundred would would go through about where it is, cut through. The Halcyon portion that you're looking at here. Connect to the cul-de-sac and then loop back down into um the existing subdivision.
Smart built.
Yep, so then that would that would take you east, west on seventeen hundred, basically, even though it was.
I mean, seventeen hundred does connect through. I mean, there are connections.
With with the with the the lower density on the other side, I I I'm just trying to figure out why the.
So what's below the cul-de-sac where it says Hacienda Estates?
Those those are planted lots.
Plated, but not.
No, they're all built.
But all but right here. This is all built.
Everything is homes. It's there's one lot.
Yeah, these are the existing homes, and this is their yard in the back.
There's there's four lots. You can see the two that are platted on the north side and there's two on the.
I personally am fine with the trail. I don't like when we start saying eminent domain and things like that.
I know the owners, you will probably legally have to force them.
And I don't wanna, I don't like doing.
Yeah, they were their first. And I think the commissioners would probably feel the same way.
So I'm not worried about that. I just.
And there's really no traffic. There's so.
Sixteen hundred is not, is a few houses away.
Yeah, so that's why.
See, there's a concern personally.
This area is totally isolated from this area.
Stop laughing at us.
Right, see, this this was gonna. Those two parts of this.
Oh, I'm not worried about these two. It's this one to this one. This is the.
But it's still, that's what it was gonna do, right there.
Oh, right there, but it was already built. I mean, we we couldn't change that.
Well, this is how we approved it a month ago.
But these homes are already built. That's what we're finding out is we never could do that.
Okay, you you could have done what was approved a month ago.
We could have done it.
No, no, you could have done what was approved a month ago.
But he's saying that we don't own the land to connect it to that cul-de-sac, so we could have built that, but it wouldn't have.
That's right. If you if you uh went with what was approved month a month ago, the county would have to acquire the slivers around that cul-de-sac to make that connection. And and I I agree with Tyler, we probably have to use in the domain. And so that really comes down to the primary question.
There's plenty of.
They just have to go around the corner. Yeah.
When we don't have either of them, that's, I don't know, it's gonna make these roads busier for traffic that doesn't need to be going. There's nothing we can do about it.
So that is what the smart fields developer, uh Mr. Rose um said to us when when he came in and convinced us. That maybe that seventeen hundred cross thoroughfare isn't necessary. He said, you're just gonna get people speeding through these developments if you don't have some way of slowing down. Now, I don't like three-way intersections. I don't think that they provide. A good level of um vehicle uh connectivity and and efficiency. However, um jogs in the in the road, slow people down. And so if it is a three-way, that is that thing that slows you down, that's probably a good thing.
It's just between sixteen hundred and eighteen hundred. That's that's the big distance, not have other cross streets.
I agree.
Funnel a lot of traffic to both of those.
Yeah, I agree. And the subdivision next door, including the um other part of this P R U D. That all came in before we really started doing some good long range plan planning. Um, had we seen this in hindsight, we probably would have had some kind of a connection, even if it's not a thoroughfare that goes full. You know, east to west to the whole four or five blocks, whatever that we're talking about, uh some kind of connection. But today is what it is.
Will the owners allow the pedestrian path? To their.
They can't stop that. There's an easement where they could get a pedestrian path through, right?
So the very edge of that cul-de-sac, the very tip of it does touch the property line. And so that's where that crossing would take us.
Enough for a pedestrian pathway, is that what's going on?
Yep.
Okay.
And the chances are that the neighboring landowners will be more comfortable with that than punching a road through. So even if we needed to go work on easements. Um, it's probably a little easier to work on that.
So, okay, that's. We just don't have the width.
Yeah.
But not wide enough, okay. You can't solve those problems.
Talk about trees again.
I'm I'm already on board for the tree program. I mean, we just wanted to work what's best for the community. We don't.
Okay, so the pedestrian pathways will be helpful. And that's about all we can do.
Connect the kids to their friends. Think of the children. It's good.
Well, by God, at least we don't have them.
It's fine.
Diverting.
A a lot of the utilities for uh Onsalme and Smartfields are going through this. Um, that that's why. Um, the engine, the engineer's not here, but that's what they built it around, that it was a benefit to them as well, that all of the utilities are gonna are. Able to run through this instead of finishing sixteen hundred.
Charlie, has there been any discussion with the county commission on their thoughts of doing away with the easement on top of this property?
The response I got from Commissioner Frower specifically was. Uh, you could tell them stop right now, that's not gonna happen. But then as we talked a little bit more about it and the additional contribution to the park district, he said, well, okay, they're gonna have to sweeten the deal. Uh, so whatever that sweetener is, maybe it's just enough to do uh one and a half times the typical contribution uh as a gift to.
I mean, we that you guys are requiring two thousand from the other.
We're not requiring nothing.
Okay, let's just say that there's a two thousand dollar requirement from somebody, and ours is fine. That's what we're willing to do per lot. So I feel like that's. Substantial. Um, and it's all in water shares, which is really the problem, not the money. So.
It's what the park district wants. That's what's important.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they came to us. So Rogers and my ward, he's he came to me, so.
What kind of water is it?
It's it's secondary toper irrigation water. Yeah.
Basically, you're giving them three shares?
No, I I mean, we're giving, we're giving them what we have left. So it's at least three. I mean, three shares right now is over ninety thousand dollars, so.
Twenty five thousand.
Yeah, well, I mean, we've heard that they've sold for up to thirty five right now, so.
There's eleven shares on, actually thirteen shares on KSO right now.
Yeah.
Or excuse me, twenty five thousand dollars a share.
Yeah. I'll have to let Pat know. He probably won.
I was shocked they were for that price as well.
It's bait and switch.
Guy that told me, right, that's why I was surprised he didn't go buy them.
Yeah.
Anyways, anything else on this one?
That's their uh marketing price just to get you into the store. They're actually gonna sell you the Cadillac in the front.
Any other questions?
I don't have any. Misses. Okay. Anything else for us?
No.
Okay, with that.
So I want to make sure I understand. If we can solve the tree issue, you guys are comfortable.
I I feel like there's too much confusion between both parties. I don't know that it's just the developer. Honestly, hearing everybody's comments, it seems.
It sounds like.
After hearing what Steve read, I would be confused as the developer as well.
So look at it from the point of just like putting in a water line or something like that. If you don't put it in, you have to escrow for it. But technically, it's part of your agreement. It needs to be in.
Right, but we at at the end of the day, the county did come in and check out, sign off our entire agreement, regardless of if the trees were in or not. Which they wouldn't do with a sewer line or a water.
Has it all been approved?
It's.
Has.
We've already received our bond back. It's been done for you guys. No, no, I'm saying the rest of the subdivision was signed off and released as the county took it over.
Engineering division versus planning division.
But.
Better double check your word.
You can double check it all. It's still working. Nobody's called you guys yet.
No, I mean, this.
Oh, the trees, oh, yeah.
And this application.
And I'd love to know if 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 there is a benefit like to to. Transfer that to a a better use, uh or at least partially. I don't know.
Application comes back, comes in.
You can legally.
There there should be some resolution to the tree issue.
We get that.
And and I want to see something from the parks.
Okay, we'll talk.
We've already, we've already provided the paperwork from the parks in.
We haven't seen nothing because it's just a work session.
Okay, it's in front here. Like, it's in front here. It's up.
When when we have a document from them saying this is where they are, and then. We see if the county commission thinks that's sweet enough, because. Oh. You're given, I mean, ten acres of open space, even just open raw ground of open space, you're looking half a million dollars. But we're getting a hundred thousand dollars worth of water. In my opinion, it's not enough, but.
But again, it's up to the parks district, right?
It is, but it isn't, because we're giving up the easement.
Oh, okay.
So that's the thing. This this, when this was done, it was done on the. They they got higher density and gave up. they, they got higher density and gave up. So really, that ground has no density.
I was thinking the new offer of the water.
Or, you know, I guess they could go, the new TDR ordinance, is it in effect yet?
Uh, it is.
So they could go buy twenty-eight development rights from someone else, and.
The only, the only way they could do that is if they're in a form-based area, so they have to get a reason for a base first.
Well, darn. Hey, that could have took care of the excess density on alley acres. Put it there.
Well, we actually did, we did talk to alley acres about that, and they specifically didn't want to do um the higher density, because they didn't want to have to transfer. So, I mean, pre-density, they're walking out the door with a little more money in their pocket, but um they, they wouldn't have wanted to play ball with the uh transfer requirement.
My opinion is water's not enough for what the, giving up ten, ten acres of open space, and I want to see trees.
All alongs.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I think, I think we have somewhat clear direction.
Glad you did.
Well, this is, it's definitely a unique circumstance, so.
Yep.
Jerry?
Yes.
Second. We're done.
I.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm having trouble.
Hey.
We'll have to get a grocery pack.
Allergic to chicken. The world's chicken. I can't eat chicken. No way. Fat, huh? Yeah.
I don't know.
You gotta be careful what about.